Welcome this morning to day two. We're looking forward to another day of really exciting discussions. Yesterday was very productive. Today will be even more so. I'm going to turn it this time to our manager pitch.
Thank you, Mary. We have adjusted your schedule a little bit this morning so that you can sort of pick right back up where you were in CIP. There were two remaining special topic questions and then we wanted to get to your prioritization. It's all important information, but Michael really needs this in order to bring you back your next exercise. So we're going to extend this. We've got the two hours with a break at 10:30 so that you can get back to your room if you have not brought your luggage and go get that. We're going to lengthen our budget capacity. Let's see. Yeah. Lengthen our budget capacity philosophy that was the carryover and move that first morning session to that. Because, Jamie, we'll need two hours to present that. So that'll have us with lunch at about 12:45 instead of 12:15. But you do have a morning break that will be coming in, so we'll do things in here to bridge that gap. And then we're just going to go into our economic development discussion. That's your last session. That'll end at 2:30 instead of 2:00. And we're just going to sort of shorten our retreat debrief. We found that sometimes you need some time to think about that a little bit more, so we'll come back and pick that up. And then we'll still be on time to leave. So that's the basic adjustments we're going to make to the schedule. I'd love head nods that everybody's okay with that. Great. All right. I'm going to turn it back over to Michael.
All right. Thanks, though. We'll just go ahead and get right to it. So we kind of left off in the special topic section yesterday. Item that we had for your discussion is the public works facility. I'm really just looking for your perspective on this project in consideration of the timing of the aviation parkway widening. I've been talking a little bit about the timing for that project yesterday, like 28, 29 for construction. So just wanted to get your input on the timing with that, some considerations with that. So if we move forward with the project significantly ahead of the DOT's project timing, that could impact our ability to get right-of-way funding from DOT. Of course, as we've talked about plenty at the retreat, delaying also brings in some of the cost escalation impacts. So that's another consideration as well.
So would, how would we even do that if the road's not there? Isn't the betterment, isn't that like sidewalks and streetlights and...
Oh, so just for some additional context, so we're talking about the public works facility, which is along aviation.
Right.
The widening of aviation with, right now, the DOT's public meetings, they're drawing, showing aviation widening going through the middle of the public works facility, so...
Okay. Literally.
You know, so...
That's disturbing.
That's part of, the part of the driver for the public works facility project is just, you know, basically we'd, you know, have to have an option for a public works facility if that would be impacted in that way. So the question is more of that, the considerations are more, less about the betterments and more just about the timing of the public works facility.
However, isn't there an interdependency with the Wake County expansion of their, you know, recycling facility that's right adjacent? So how does that hold in?
Yes, and working with their convenience center project. Giselle, do you want to add anything about that? I don't have the question on the clock, but yes.
That's fine.
And how would they, how would that be impacted just working?
Well, the project will also, you know how tiny their convenience center is.
Right.
So widening that road will pretty much just take all of the entire convenience center out. And they are, obviously, with the partnership in this project, their convenience center is expanding to provide for needs that are in the area that they currently cannot provide in the current convenience center.
That's a good thing. Right.
To answer the previous question about how the betterments tie with the timing, there is considerations if we continue to advance with the project that we will have to make about providing temporary access. And some turning lanes and putting sidewalk along our front edge is just not going to have continuation until the betterments come. But the access to the site will have to be done. There might need to be some modifications when the betterments come or when the widening comes. But all of that will have to be done as part of the project rather than through the betterments if the project continues in the current path.
When is Wake County, what's the timing of their projects?
It's one project. However, in order to keep both of us operating during the construction, the basic plan is that the public works facility will be constructed immediately adjacent to our current site, which is the wooded part of the land. Once the public work facility is up, operations will move to the new facility. Then our current facility will be demolished and the convenience center will be built.
So the, so the plan is to have the public works facility already built before the widening of aviation?
That is the current timing. So the question is whether we want to continue on that timing or slow down to allow the widening, the right-of-way acquisition process as part of the widening to occur. Because if we advance, continue the project in the, in the fact that we're going, we will not receive right-of-way acquisition monies. We had a meeting with DOT and they said accelerated or advanced right-of-way acquisitions will not be considered on this project because the project is, was, was on pause. It remains on pause. The design is at 30% and they have not initiated the process again. Currently, the right-of-way acquisition is timed for 2028.
Oh, my gosh. How much money are we talking, though? How much is the right-of-way acquisition cost? Because that's really important to this decision.
So the estimates that we've seen, which I think probably on the low side, but the preliminary estimate $133,000, but that's assuming the tax value right now or where the drawings are at right now from DOT. So relative to the size of the project, not. But would, is it fair to say that we would, it would likely be more than that?
It will likely be more.
At the time of...
But not much more.
Well, the, the land is, right now, the market value is really low. But in order for DOT to get right-of-way, they will have to appraise the land. So I did a calculation utilizing the same methodology that they utilized for the offer they made for Fire Station Two. And, Michael, you have that number, it's the last one on the chart. Is it 530, 500 and...
Sorry, which, sorry, which number?
Assuming that they are paying $720,000 an acre.
Oh, yeah. It's 400, it'd be 468,000.
It will be 468,000, because they are acquiring about point, point 65 acres is what they will acquire.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, this is an assumption based on 30% plans.
So I appreciate that. What I'm thinking is, in five years, how much inflationary costs are going to be eaten up by the project? Isn't going to be greater than 400,000? Because that's the question we have at hand with their, with our magical crystal ball, so.
So that's the, that figure you calculate today.
Right.
Not based on some kind of future evaluation.
Now, I utilize, for Fire Station Two, they utilize a price of $720,000 an acre because the land adjacent to Fire Station Two was selling for seven, for between 600 to 800,000 dollars an acre. So they did an average. So I utilized 700,000 an acre.
They did market value.
However, on International Drive, there's a land that just sold that's being developed. They sold for 400,000 dollars an acre. So there'll be some wear in between. And DOT was very clear in the meeting when they said, "We will not, we will not anticipate the right-of-way. And keep in mind that while the right-of-way, the right-of-way shown for public meeting maps is always worst-case scenario." So maybe where the right-of-way width they need is slightly less than what is estimated just because the public map is so early in the process.
As you recall, the same thing happened with Fire Station Two. The initial drawing was going through our fire station and then magically when we started talking real dollars, all of a sudden it's not, it's just touching the very front of it.
I'm more worried about the second one, like, you know, where the alignment, you know, you said it is going to take a lot of the existing old public works. Is that set in stone or is there an adulation for, to push it aside?
Well, I think that's, is it set in stone that it would, the actual widening would run through the middle of the facility? Yeah, I think that's what we were just talking about. In the past, with Fire Station Two, they're showing drawings where it's going, initially it was going to go through and then, you know, they back off and it doesn't actually impact. So no, I don't think it's set in stone.
And I don't even understand how we would do betterments to a road that if we really don't have any idea where it's going to be, like, would we put...
Again, this isn't really about the betterment. This is about the fact that if we wait and wait to move until, or to do construction until they are doing their widening, we can potentially, well, we would get some compensation from DOT because of losing our property. Whereas if we start to build now, we would not get any compensation because we were already essentially moved out of that right-of-way framework, Giselle. And so what I think Giselle has mentioned is we would build a few of the things that they might otherwise build because we'd be doing a project. And by our own DVO, we'd be required to put in sidewalk. And then there'd be additional costs because we'd be building with the expectation of where aviation was going to be. So we'd have to stub out some driveways to connect back to what is not yet developed by DOT. Is that...
That is correct.
Okay.
But I guess my point is, it's possible that I just don't understand the situation. My point is stub out driveways to where? Put sidewalks, like, if we don't know, so you're saying that we don't know whether the road might go, but I mean, we don't know. The road might go right through the middle of the existing public works thing. Or, so are we going to put a sidewalk through there? Like, what are we talking about actually doing?
So we know the worst-case scenario of how much of our property they might take for aviation.
Right.
So we're going to, we're building, designing beyond that. So with the assumption that they would go that far. If they don't go that far, then that just leaves more space between the roadway and our new facility.
Yeah, but Tams points, so we're going to build sidewalk, but we don't really know where the sidewalk should go because we don't know what the width of the road is?
Can we take payment, Lou?
There is that possibility.
Yeah. I was going to say, just take payment and loop. We do that for developers. So let's just go ahead and build our building and pass the money in reserve. So as part of the project and as part of the betterments, we can use that money then and...
But we lose money.
We lose money.
Yeah, but the money we lose, I think it's eaten up by inflation and the fact that DOT, although well-intentioned, they are a large organization that moves very slowly and has lots of constraints. We can be more agile. We can actually move this project forward for the betterment of our citizens, our residents, and especially our public works workers who've been waiting really a long time for this to be in a safer facility. This is the floodplain thing. There's lots of reasons to go forward with public works, not the least of which is we've only put aside, I think, 16 million of debt capacity. And that will grow a lot in the next couple of years if we keep on waiting for DOT.
But if I understand the project correctly, we're not talking about whether to build the, the, I get it, but he's answering my question, so I'm asking him a follow-up. He, we're not talking, we're not talking about whether to build the public works thing or not. We're talking about whether...
Yeah, we are.
The timing.
We're talking about when.
That's the question today.
When.
Do we continue on our timeline or do we wait for DOT?
That's a wrong slide. The wording is different. Why, yeah.
Is it?
Oh, well, perhaps if she's saying improvements.
Betterments. Yeah, betterments do not be, I see what you're saying. Betterments, yes.
Take the word betterment out. That's what's holding, yes.
Could I say something, please?
Dominant and relocation.
Well, I know we need a public works facility. And the construction costs will increase. And we still benefit from that because the property values will increase, so our revenue will increase.
They're saying they won't, we won't get any money back from them if we proceed on our time.
That's not what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
We don't tax. We... I'm not talking about that, about taxing the public works. I'm saying it seem, okay, so it seems to be that it's a concern if we push out the public works facility project, that the construction costs will increase. However, during that same time, property values of which we get their property taxes will be increasing as well. And we're going to be activating Spark and blah, 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 and all that stuff there, which increases our tax base as well. So, yeah, the construction cost is going to increase, but at the same time, our revenue is going to be increasing during that period of time. So to me, it's not a concern, or at least the construction cost increasing is really not that big of a concern because our revenue is going to be increasing at the same time.
So are you saying that you, you don't think that there's a compelling financial reason to go forward with the public works?
No. I think, I think it's a compelling reason to wait because if we don't, we lose money from, that we could be getting from the DOT.
But I think that the money that we're likely to get from the DOT is $130,000. I mean, that's, it seems likely that construction costs and property costs, everything costs would increase more than that on such a huge project.
I think for the purpose of your consideration, it will, while I calculated $133 based on the market value as shown on the tax record today, it is fair to say that NCDOT wouldn't offer something as low. And it is, it is safer to go with the similar methodology they used for Fire Station Two, which will be the 500 and...
468,000.
468,000 dollars. Now, on Fire Station Two, they came back and said, "We're not going to, we're not going to take the building. We're only going to take the, the entrance and portion of the parking lot. And we're going to inconvenience you enough, but we're not going to take the, the, the property." So they've made that offer. We are working with an attorney to try to counter offer and push them to do another appraisal because it is a building that will continue to operate and operations will be impacted heavily. And on that particular project, our attorneys can help secure more money from that offer. The difference with the public works facility is we don't know where that right-of-way is running. And the facility, because we have determined that we have a need to increase the size of the facility, working in partnership with Wake County, our facility won't continue to exist after the right-of-way acquisition. It will be a complete modification, complete rebuild of the facility. What I'm trying to say is our ability to negotiate because our operations are impacted heavily on Fire Station Two is not necessarily the same for public works facility. Because as a result of that, we are also increasing the size of our facility and we're benefiting from it. And it's something that NCDOT expressed in their meeting where they said, "If you, if you impact our, improving your facility, then it's one of those situations in which we may have, there won't be that much room for negotiation."
Entire hands.
So I hope I didn't confuse you. I just wanted to put it in, in perspective.
I understand.
So you're telling, no, no, I...
Yeah, I don't think so.
So unlike Fire Station Two, it was impacting, but you're, you're saying if they do their alignment, that will, suppose we are not building public works, okay, just for, for a thought process. Then they are pretty much impacting our existing, you know, public works completely and with their alignment. So they should compensate equally well even before we move forward. And for me, I feel like till the alignment is set in stone, we should not move anything because anything we do before or after will impact. My worry is, I asked the question yesterday, why can't we add two more floors? They said, "Because it's a floodplain, the parking is an issue, you know? And if it gets moved more, pushed towards this way, it's a negotiation now, like, you know, how much we will lose and how much are we closer to the wetland on the other side?" So I feel like, you know, anywhere till 2029, they're not doing, if you're expecting to complete the public works, which means like you had to start at least next one, two years, you know? To do that, do we have the capacity to put the 16 million, is it already programmed into it? Or, and the second is, we are losing the money from the right-of-way that we could use it in a different way because, you know, assuming we have delayed our public works, then we can take the whole compensation out that you're screwing up our entire, you know, public works. And because of your alignment, move it others so that the impact is less and then we can build our public works.
Okay. So the, the, the figure you're talking about, this 460-some-odd K, that's just for the right-of-way? That does not include the betterments, well, not betterments, the improvements that we would have to make on aviation, sidewalk, the curb and gutter? So that's an additional expense?
Which we would have to do anyway, regardless of whether we do it now or later, those betterments are...
That would not be, that would not be included in the project? DOT's project? Wouldn't DOT come in and do that?
Only the sidewalk. Well, the sidewalk we'll still have to pay, it's part of our betterment share on the project. But we still have to do the turning lanes, the access to our property is still, we still have to do that. The main thing we will need to do is connecting our turning lanes and our driveways to the current alignment of aviation parkway. So we will essentially lose those, the expense of those temporary connections.
Okay. All right. So if, so is the DOT position that we can't do, that doing anything on the public works project would jeopardize our right-of-way compensation? So in other words, if we, I mean, we basically know that, like, let's say that we, we assume a certain amount of right-of-way and we go forward with a plan for public works. And if the, if they don't, if, if DOT doesn't widen the road as far as we think, that just means the driveways have to get longer and we'll find with that, right? So are they saying that any movement on the public works project jeopardizes our right-of-way and they won't, they won't reimburse us for any compensation to the public works thing? Or can we, can we put the, put the public works project in motion? Can we start a design? And then when they, you know, in 2020, I guess if they're going to do it in '28, we would get the design in like '27. Then can that project be shuttle-ready in '27 so that we could move, like, we'd be in a position to move forward with it when they tell us where the road is going to be and they, and they, we acquire the right-of-ways and they reimburse us for it?
The project is already under design.
Okay.
It's coming close to about 25, 30% in design.
Okay.
And we are, our plan right now is to be under construction by the end of 2024 and be completed in 2026, maybe 2027. So that means we are two years ahead of DOT. However, let me remind you that DOT is saying right-of-way will begin in 2028 and they have one year to a year and a half for right-of-way acquisition. Then construction will come in 2030.
I mean, to me, like, you're talking about, you're talking about, this is a public works facility that we need now. I mean, let alone like, start, you know, like, let alone start construction in like '24, even '25, the project slips. And then now we're talking about waiting until '28 on DOT's promise that they're going to be ready in '28. I mean, it seems like a lot could happen at DOT in five years. I have no confidence in that. Oh, my God.
Yeah, I was just focused, go ahead. Yeah. My question is like, is such as a, like, you know, we are swapping our land, we're building on the Wake County land, and then we are giving our public works demolished and giving it to them. So they are also equally, you know, jeopardizing their plans, right? So why don't you guys team up together saying that, push the alignment? Because it's like, if we do the public works and if their right-of-way is heavily impacted in their planning, that could also impact the overall facility for what they're doing.
So the implied question is, are we working in conjunction with Wake County? Are they negotiating like we are to try to...
Wake, Wake County and the public works project is a single project that is being administered jointly by Wake County in our engineering department. So we are pretty much doing everything together.
What did their commissioners say about timing and whatever their thoughts?
We haven't asked them yet that question.
We're first, thank you.
You handed me this. Your commissioners will not get involved in this project. Their staff will handle it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So why are we doing it?
Because this is the way our council works.
Okay. So we're, we're getting closer to a resolution, I think, or a direction.
I don't have confidence that this aviation expansion won't be delayed further.
Yeah.
Because of the shortfall in revenues due to electron, electric cars and other kind of situations. They're, they're struggling. They delayed aviation or airport boulevard extension by six months so far. And that's a funded project.
Near-term project.
We, independent of right-of-way revenue or exchange and all that, we need a public works facility. We needed it yesterday. If, if it's possible to get some stubbing out and save some costs until we really know when the road is going to be designed, ready and stuff like that. I think we need to move forward with the needs of the community with the public works facility on schedule. And, and it, it's painful, but I, I can't wait for DOT to decide when they're going to do something. We would have to rely on points and compete more because it's an unfunded project right now and it's on hold.
Oh, it's funded.
It's funded.
But it's on hold.
Yes, but it's funded. Can I ask you a question? This project has moved in and out. Remind me, I know it was supposed to be started like yesterday, but, or tomorrow. When it was pushed out, did it push back in again? Remind me of...
Yeah. When I arrived, this was a project that was, I think, in the step and it's been moved, moved, moved.
When was that again?
Yeah, but it was moved down, then was pulled back in again.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. That is correct. And then, and again, just for context, you know, let's say it's 500,000 on a current, let's just say with what we've got budgeted, that's, you know, 0.03 part of the project when you look at how many years. Just, just contextual.
Okay. So do you have a recommendation? Do you all have a recommendation?
Do, do I? Or I think probably you need to hear from Giselle about the recommendation.
Yeah. Actually, I was going to ask. I'm in favor of moving forward with the project. I mean, even though I'm not happy, as Councilor Germerl has reminded us, that we're going to lose the right-of-way funding. But I think if we don't move forward with it, it's going to get delayed further and then we don't know what's going to happen with DOT. So I really would like to hear from Giselle about what you...
And then I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with mine after Giselle speaks.
Yeah. Yeah. Before she says, like, for me, I wanted to know the, the market, is it going to come down because lumber came down? What is a prospect of the construction cost in two years because where the interest rates are and everything has slowed down? Do you think that's, the timing is also critical in helping to get the cost back to its sanity level? That, you know, I, I don't know the answer because what I'm hearing, the lumber is coming down, the construction is slowing down all across the triangle and the country and labor and all those issues. So from your point of view, like, you know, how does that play into our decision-making?
Construction prices and inflation, I think it's very uncertain right now. There's a few agencies out there that are tracking this month by month. And I think Michael sent us some information yesterday about how the inflation is across the nation. I have been following the estimates done by the AGC, which is the Association of General Contractors, to see how those trends go. And they have been... And they have been, and currently their estimation is, we don't know where this is heading and we don't know when it will ever come down. So I think the, the industry is right now in a expectation, anticipation of what's gonna happen. But there is no, there's no hope in the near future that things will come back to where they were. Um, to, to go to my recommendation, um, does anyone have any questions before I share my recommendation?
We're all waiting.
That's all, that's all.
My recommendation is to continue the project in the current pattern. Um, waiting for DOT, obviously, it's will be delaying the project, potentially facing cost inflation. If we assume that the inflation will be at ten percent on a sixty million dollar project, you see how big of a number are we talking about? If we just play it safe and say it's only a ten percent. However, we are seeing that we are facing escalation of anywhere from twenty to a thirty percent increase on projects. Um, so for, for those, for me, that's one of the reasons why I would like to continue the project in the current path. Plus, the main reason why I would like to keep the project in the current path, it's very clear that the Poly Works operations need a better facility. They need better room, they need, their staff really needs a better location for them to work. And they, they really need a better location for them that allows them that expansion that they need to continuously work effectively. This is a project that has been delayed for a very long time. There is staff that has come retired during that timeframe. With the anticipation that they will get to see a new facility within their timeframe. And that hasn't occurred. Now we have a workforce there that is now thinking, will it ever happen in my time with Morrisville, right? And obviously, I came from Poly Works, I really want to make sure that within my time in Morrisville, we can see this project coming to fruition. And being able to see staff working well out of that facility. I'm only speaking now about Poly Works, but we can dismiss the fact of what this project will bring to Morrisville. In partnership with Wake County Convenience Center. Their convenience center will be expanded in such a way that will offer such a great benefit to the community. By providing different collections that are currently not allowed and people have to drive all the way to Hollyston. So this will provide a great benefit to our community by providing that joint project. So another reason why I definitely would like to keep the project in the, in the current schedule. We've, we've gone through working with DOT in so many aspects and, and I would say. There's delays after delays and delays after delays. And I would hate for us to be, uh, to see that happen in this project as well.
Can I ask that question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I support everything Giselle said and she made all my points, in particular about added value from enhanced Wake County. Services that they've got information about that need in our part of town. So again, the, the facility won't be, the, the design of the facility won't be compromised. Uh, I mean, they've taken that into account again in this worst case scenario type of thing. So I, I do agree with everything she had to say. It, it's long past due, not only for the benefit of the staff, but for the community. And I am just concerned, I think the only other point I'd make is. If we delay, we could potentially also run into places where we don't have good timing. So say that road project starts, that we could get a facility built, outplace, and then allow the next phase to happen. And then we'd have to find a temporary location for public works facilities, which would be exceptionally problematic. We looked at that before I came about, were there alternative locations versus where we're at? Before we settled on, no, it needs to go someplace in that area.
Can I just ask a question? The only thing that bothers me is the, the assumption that construction costs were. So I, I don't know that much about what drives increases in construction costs. But I, like, for example, in my line of work, I know what drives increases in semiconductor. In semiconductor shortages, right? So, and increases in prices. So that is being eased gradually, that factories are finally catching back up, finally able to, to produce. You know, they produce a little extra over two years and they're finally sort of catching back up. And the assumption in my field is that those prices will come down once there's, once the supply is freed up again. But I don't really see how that would translate to higher construction costs. And I'm just wondering what drives, what's driving the higher construction cost? Well, you don't have to tell me what's driving the higher construction cost. But if you could tell me if there, if those, whatever's driving them is likely to be gradually alleviated. Then we could see theoretically cost, construction costs coming back down. So if you, are you saying in your professional opinion that you don't see that even starting to happen? Because we're gonna start this project, it, it seems like it's either start it next year or move it out in five years. Those are, it seems pretty black and white. So if you're saying that, it, I mean, it's kind of a gamble, you know? I mean.
Technology is, that's a whole different business model, so technology is always.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is that.
There's no new technology in construction that would drive costs back down. I think there's a compelling.
But there's supply and demand.
Yeah.
That's a whole different.
The trades are aging out though.
Yeah, and the, yeah, labor.
I, I think best case, construction stays flat. So is there a compelling argument that we need a public works facility now? And I think, if that feels there is, this couns, past councils have said that yes, public works is an important thing to have happen. I would like to see this happen. I'd like to support staff's recommendation. But, and the group seems to be coalescing around that, but I think there's still some concerns. I think by continuing to go forward, I don't think we really lose anything. If DOT comes around and does something, that's great. But if we wait for them and, once again, be at their mercy. Um, I just don't think that there's much progress to meet the, um, and we're just holding our breath.
Giselle, when will, when will the design be done? Do you ask me?
Um, I could connect to it, I could tell you, but right now we're at thirty percent. We should be done by the end of this year with design. And permitting will be a little, uh, long process because we will, we're gonna need permits, not only from the town, from the county. But we'll also need permits from the town here. So we'll be ready for construction next year.
And Giselle, just to confirm and clarify for everybody, are you talking about calendar year or fiscal year?
I'm sorry, calendar year. Thank you.
We, we always get.
Yeah, so, so I would agree that there is, you know, obviously concern. So what if we, I, I would say continue on the path we're on now and let's do a touch again at the end of the year when the design is done.
I, I agree with that.
And, and again, this is to help define, define your plan. You, you visit your plan every year.
Yeah.
But even if we went ahead with permitting, can we, can we do permitting without the right of ways? Like, like, when do we actually have to put, when do we actually, like, is it, is it shovel in the ground? When we actually have to commit all the money and there's no, like, touch point anymore? Or is it, can we permit and then take a touch point or like?
So glad you asked about permits because there are permits that expire.
Okay, so there you go.
We currently have a permit with the Army Corps of Engineers for the wetlands in the land. And a very small intermittent stream that is also on the land. I cannot tell you in top of head when does that expire, but the expiration date will occur, will happen. Right after we go into construction. So as long as we put a shovel in the ground, essentially you start working on the project, that expiration date doesn't really count anymore. So our current date for shovel in the ground is within the window before our permit expires with the Army Corps of Engineers. All the permits that we will need to obtain, some of them have an expiration date of a year, some of them have an expiration date of six months. So then we all, once we obtain permits, we have to push all in the ground within that timeframe. Otherwise, we will have to start over. And keep in mind, when we start over, you're needing the current requirements of the time you start over. So if anything changes within that timeframe, we'll be facing that.
Train's on the tracks.
So this is one of these important projects, your debt model? Because it is currently sitting out in twenty twenty six in terms of capacity. So understanding your priority and your support for keeping on the track that aligns with Wake County. That joint partnership is a really important message to us. As Michael and I work to align resources and rebalance that capacity. In comparison to your other priorities that you're gonna tell us today, that we also need to be holding into that picture. Just be mindful of that. It's a, it's a project that has increased in cost and even what's shown on the CIP right now is gonna have to be increased.
Uh, Jeannie, do you know how much in the bond we have allocated for this public works?
This is not a bond project.
It is not a bond.
No, this was not the sexy project. So it was the installment financing that was accounted for, however, in the debt modeling. At, 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 at an amount, but that amount is increased because of the time that we just keep passing this project by. The cost has increased.
So, so what's the current cost estimates? Sixteen million. Sixteen million is what's.
Sixty million accounted for in the last debt modeling. Giselle would tell you the project is probably above twenty plus.
Yeah, so the sixty million is construction onward. So those don't account for design, permitting, furnishings.
I think we allocated a million dollars already, like, four years ago for the design.
One point three.
One point three.
Yeah, and that's what we have been working with. So again, your philosophy and your support behind projects and the prioritization, it's really important today. Because it's going to lead to how do we balance the picture of what is affordable within the capacity that we have? And rebalancing that picture, not just this project, but with all of the projects that you prioritize today. What are the top pieces?
But is there a difference between, there's gotta be a difference between being able to afford a sixteen million dollar project and being able to afford a twenty million dollar project? And then by the time we actually go to borrow the money, like, what's it gonna be, twenty two?
So stay in the area today for me, but I wanted to make that nexus for you.
Well, stuff thrown out on this, Jeannie.
What all of this is contributing to is building that picture.
So.
Multiple things.
Very happy.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna see if we can wrap this. There's obviously, uh, concern about costs, about timing, about lots of things. But would it be fair to say that, um, even for those who have hard-earned and still have concerns? That there is general council consensus to give staff direction to continue on their current path and not delay?
I think respectfully that hard-earned is a, is a somewhat dismissive term. I, I understand what you mean, I do understand what you mean a hundred percent, but I, I just want, you know, words matter.
Still valid concerns are out.
Yes, that's way better, thank you.
For all of us, and I think a lot of those have been shared and staff has heard those. Um, and will do everything they can to try to address them.
Yes.
So given that fact, even those who feel, um, voice those concerns. Would we all get head nods that there's general consensus among the group to keep it moving forward? So no one's against it, but everyone understands that there's still concerns and that will get.
Well, this is like taking a touch point when the design is done, that's.
Yeah, so every year, staff will bring this back to us. And if things change greatly, we can readdress it, but right now, keep moving forward and give staff that direction. Do we get head nods on that?
Yeah, yeah, the fact is they're working out of that one point three, which has been already allocated. So pretty much it's BAU right now, you know, so there's nothing that we have to.
So they're not asking for more money now, so there's no real downside of continuing on our path. So that's a, a way to think about it as well. So I'm looking around, I think we see general consensus? I think that gives staff what they need?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Good discussion, great ballot points. All right, two more special topic questions for you. So next is the Veterans Memorial, so you all heard a presentation. Okay, I'm sorry, oh, um, can we, there's been, uh, are we done with.
No, keep moving, we're good.
Okay.
I'm not done with it, keep moving.
We might circle back to that one.
Okay.
We're done, sir. Okay, so next item is the Veterans Memorial, you all heard a presentation on that Tuesday night. So just a question for you today, what you, where that project's at and what you heard on Tuesday night. Obviously, your project, CIP team did not rank or evaluate this project. You heard the information presented, is this something that you're ready to incorporate into your CIP? Is it a project you would like to prioritize as part of that process, something that we should be incorporating into our planning? Or is that something you would like to weigh on? So that, that's, that's really the question on this before you.
Do you mean, do you mean incorporate the design cost into, because I thought they were raising money for the construction?
They, I understand that is the plan. I think the question is, is there, is, is this, so when we get ready to do your prioritization exercise? And we get ready to put your CIP together, is it a project that you are ready to, for us to incorporate? Or is it something you wanna weigh on?
Like, there's, there's probably a couple of options to this, one of which is the question of, you know, and, and, you know, don't have to necessarily make a decision today. But looking for guidance on, are you interested slash willing to consider seventy five thousand dollars to begin design? So to, you know, we, we have one more round of feedback coming from Stuart to address some of the questions potentially about trees, benches, a couple of things like that. But we didn't hear anything from that feedback that the, the substantial components of what's been designed needed to change, I don't believe. So, you know, benches, trees, things like that, but there was at least general support of that overall concept. So now the question is, do you want to keep that moving by potentially allocating seventy five thousand dollars? But then I think the bigger philosophical question is around the million dollars. And how involved do you as a council, do we as a town, want to be in funding that million dollars? Understanding that the memorial committee group, you know, is committed to this and wants to raise money for this. And yes, having a design, a nice picture to show can help with that. So it really becomes a question of, do you want to start the design and then wait for them to have the opportunity to find some donors? Again, we've had some conversation, they're not gonna, respectfully, don't anticipate that they will sell a million dollars in bricks. They'll, they'll need some corporate sponsorships. So part of the question becomes, how much is the town, are you willing to be an investor in that depending on what they can do over time?
So how much did we spend already on the preliminary design? How much was that?
Fifteen.
Thirty five?
Yeah, I think it was twenty five to thirty.
Yeah, I think it was closer to, well, we haven't gotten three D renderings yet, which is part of it.
Correct.
So between thirty and forty.
So can we allocate seventy five thousand dollars in our CIP or budget this year? And then get that going and then revisit this next year about how much to put in for construction?
So I'd like to add to Councilmember Fenders, I, I would, one, like to add this to the CIP list. So that we have visibility and tracking on it and staff will score it. I support the construction design allocation. Now, when exactly you push the go button, because I think there's a few tweaks to the design. But I'm in support of getting it shovel ready. That's a philosophy that we all have is getting our projects to shovel ready. So that grants are more easily accessible as well as corporations might do sponsorships much better. If they understand the support of the town and maybe a letter of support for the project. If we haven't already done so, we can do another letter of support, which might help them with their fundraising as well.
Uh, Satish?
I, I've got a different perspective on this, not like I want to discount this project or anything. It is, you spend thirty to forty thousand dollars, they have something that they can show. It is a five oh one C corporation that they have set up. So the policy is like, you know, we don't have any set policy that we are funding five oh one C threes. Or is it under a town project or we are basically putting to a nonprofit as one thing? And also there is a statute of limitations of the permitting, which is two years. With the site plan and everything, correct me, Giselle, like after that, you know, you have to apply and all those things. Is our intent to basically completely take it off their hand and do it? Then that's a different thought process. Or if we had to keep them on this one, so I want to see what are, what can they do with what we have spent forty thousand? What can they go out in the market to, to fetch more money? If they are unable to do it, then only then I, I would put seventy-five thousand towards it.
Yes, Steve.
I, first of all, I'm in favor of putting this on the CIP so that we can get visibility in the project. I, I, I do believe that we should, as Councilmember Germain said, because they're a five oh one three C, perhaps give them some time to raise the money they need to raise, but as a partner with them, assist them to some of the things I've spoken about. Communications, you know, getting word out. I do not see this committee in place now being able to raise that kind of money without making changes. So I don't know, long-term, we should look at if we do, you know, want to take the project over eventually, would we, would we want to have our own committee and take applications? And really look at people that have experience of fundraising. I know this is not something that everyone in the committee wants to hear and I appreciate their service of the committee. But there are corporations that can give us the money to do this. So, you know, that's the question is can we facilitate those connections? I would feel more confident down the road, if we did take it over as a town project, that the town of Morrisville would, would be the ones, just like a advisory committee. That we take in applications, vet them, vote on them, place people on the committee and then move forward like that. So that's kind of my long-term vision, but what I'm saying is for the next year, look, put it on the CIP, try to figure out how we can work, but we've got to make changes because the way it's going right now, we're not, they're not going to raise nine hundred three thousand. Okay, that's just my opinion.
I one hundred percent agree with that. That I, I think that they, they're entering the phase of the project where they need fundraising expertise, where they need communications expertise, they need, they, they need all types of expertise that respectfully to the committee. I mean, I, they've done a great job so far. But these projects, these million dollar projects have different phases and they are about to level up. But I, I don't, I don't agree that with putting it on the town CIP. I, I think that this, that this type of project is, is exactly the type of project where corporate sponsorship, where grants, where, where public support can get you over a million dollar finish line. It's just, I mean, it's a lot of money, like to me personally, but in the scheme of projects like this, it's just not that much money. And so I, I don't think that putting it on our CIP gives it any level of visibility that we don't already have.
But it could help them raise money, it could help them raise money if this is a town of Morrisville.
See, to me, I, to me, if, if we put it on our CIP as a corporation, if they come to me for money and I say that it's already on the Town of Morrisville Capital Improvement Plan, what is my, what's my incentive to donate anything? And, and to, and I think that it should go on the CIP when we make the decision that all the grants are in, all the corporate support that's going to be, that's going to be realized is in. And there's still a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gap, a five hundred thousand dollar gap. If we decide at that time that we're going to fill that gap, to me, that's when it's a Town of Morrisville Capital Improvement Project.
But I, but I think we have to put a timestamp on that because we've been talking about this now for so many years.
Right.
So if we wait another, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that maybe that's the case then, and maybe we say, we give it one more year or six more months. And with their, with our assistance and our connections, if they can't raise the money, then I think the town needs to take over the project. And then we put it on the, we, we put it, put it in the parking lot and then we bring it in and we take it over. We come up with our own committee and we commit the money. That's the only way this is going to happen. If we go another two to three years, we're going to be sitting, if we don't put it on the CIP, my concern is we're going to be in the same position now, saying the same thing.
I don't think that we shouldn't support the project. I'm fine with the, with the town, I mean, I'm fine with, we, we've already funded the design. I'm actually fine with also funding the construction design cost. I, I'm okay with that being a budget, but I, I'm saying that the second we make that a Town of Morrisville project, I think any corporate support dries up. And I also think it's a tough case to make to the public that they should subsidize a town project with their own money. And that's never really been the intent that this would be something that we would do. I mean, they've formed a five oh one C three. They, they want to, they wanted to make it happen.
How are we handing, handling the land that the memorial will be on?
Do you know that answer?
So that would remain our land and we would basically give them the opportunity to, you know, have something constructed on our land. I think there's a, a general consensus that we would ultimately take on maintenance, you know, once it was constructed. So that, yeah, it would be, still be on town land as a part of Indian Creek Trailhead. We would likely maintain it once built. Now, I think Councilmember Roby has made a good point, I understand where you're at, Councilmember Ralph. But these folks are going to want to donate to a five oh one C three, not to just pay sort of towards what something the town might build. So you want to certainly keep that in mind as you're going forward. I think you could perhaps have an internal discussion about, you know, we want to give them X amount of time. But also I would use caution in, in any public statement around, well, you have until so-and-so and then if you don't, you know, will we consider? Again, I don't know that that encourages external donors either. And again, I also think it's important that we don't lose sight that you're making decisions that I would suggest then go back to the memorial foundation to have a conversation with them. Because this is a partnership and this is something where we want to be respectful of the work they've done and that the work they may have to do. So I think you're going back to them with a, here's how we would propose moving forward.
And I'll just, I'll just add to Brandon, it, it is and has always been considered that it will be a town asset. So it's a town park, not just on town land, but a town park. It's always been perceived that way. So several of you have mentioned the ability of the committee to, to fundraise. And I go to those meetings as a volunteer and I concur. This group of people, as, as committed and interested as they are, do not have the knowledge, experience or capacity to fundraise. So the, the option that count, could be put before the council is providing that five oh one C three, some of the support you've talked about, which is fundraising or communications. I would tell you that again, that's not our communications department, but that might be providing some resource funding to that five oh one C three to perform those services. So again, it's a, it's a different kind of support for a nonprofit. And again, also different in that this is our asset we're talking about versus just giving money to a nonprofit. That's a different kind of conversation and a different type of money usage. That's really operating budget versus a capital discussion.
What are the rules around, like, I, okay, so can I, whatever decision we make as a council, like, it, I mean, it was back when dinosaurs roamed the earth, but I've written grant applications. Could I, can I offer my help as a private citizen or does that like?
I go as a volunteer.
Well, I know, like, well, so, okay.
So yes, you can go, they would, they would welcome help, they are trying to find folks to add to their board. They would help with their fundraising and help them with grants, I, a hundred percent.
Steve probably has a million contacts.
I mean, seriously, I mean, Steve could get this thing funded in fifteen minutes.
Well, there's one, there's one gentleman I'm trying to introduce the committee to that had a lot, he's an Indian American that lives in Cary that raised about seven hundred thousand dollars for the Wounded Warriors Golf Tournament. And so, you know, getting them the right introductions, doing the communications and yeah, it's something I'd like to help with this year.
I mean, we have a Vetsi earlier at Cisco, like, sorry.
They would, they, and they talked about that too, by the way, about how to get, and they've talked about Cisco. What is Cisco, one of the ones they talked about getting some money? Anyhow, they would welcome your help, absolutely.
So I, I'm hearing a lot of support for helping this committee get us over the finish line. That this town asset is important to all of us. I hear a hybrid possibility of funding seventy-five thousand dollars for construction design cost, but not putting it on the CIP.
Was everybody on board with the seventy-five thousand?
No, my question.
I heard some people were.
It was just me.
Maybe I, I said it need, I was okay with the seventy-five when it was ready for that next step. I don't think it's ready. I don't think the, I, I think there's.
Oh, until we get that one back.
There was some design, structure things and some fundraising questions, you know?
But do we put it in the budget for fiscal year?
And, and if I could just add one more point that I think council needs to consider. You know, you just got, you just got the Veterans Memorial. And, and you also got some, I'll say shift in position of some of those people as individual members. And, and I'll say candidly, probably related to the cost. And there was support that shifted when the cost was seen. And then you had one member that is just interested in a, a different design. In any event, that conversation about what the Veterans Memorial Foundation, their reaction and feedback from council's discussion has not occurred yet, that's what I'm trying to say. So that would better inform a subsequent conversation as well as this information will help inform their conversation.
Satish said something. If we go to the next phase for the construction design, the permits, that's when the permits kick in and then there's the.
Two years.
If we apply for permits, but it's getting a design now.
No, no, but when you go for the construction, for the seventy-five thousand cost estimate, like you have to have like site design and planning and everything. And there is a statute of limitations of before when you have to start construction on it.
Yeah, permits follow the dis, construction.
Okay, that was my.
The permits follow the construction design and as, as, you know, that's eight or nine months down the road still.
Yeah.
That still only gives eight or nine months to raise a million dollars.
Yeah, so you have those, you know.
Those two years.
And, no, then from there you have two years to, I'll get it approved and then from Giselle or like, correct me if I'm wrong, because there is a limit where you have to start the construction.
Yeah, did they come on expiration day?
Yeah.
How do you have to put the shovel in the ground before the expiration?
Exactly.
But that doesn't, the clock doesn't start when you finish the design cost estimate, it starts when you apply for permit, which is totally a different question.
But, but the key is we, like Martha said, we're already hearing rumbling in their association with the cost increase. Some are in favor, some are not in favor. They want a different scope, they are like de-scoping some. So, so it is like, let, let us give some time to them to, you know, process through it and, and then come back to us, you know? I feel like if we are rushing, seventy-five thousand is not the question. If we go that route, then pretty much we are pretty much, you know, putting, we are sticking to their plan and, and going with that. So I don't want the seventy-five thousand to go waste, you know, till they come back and say, hey, you know, at the memorial, you know, we have decided we want to push back or we want to change the design, whatever they want to do is like, because A, we are giving the land, B, we have already spent forty thousand. So I want to see what they have, they can do in the next one year before we go for the next step and I'll give them some time.
Are you okay with putting it on the CIP plan though?
Only, only, I mean, only af, only after they come back with what they want. And if they basically say, hey, we are, I totally get it, it is a town asset. We, we, we want it and, but the way it is coming through a five oh one C three, I want to be respectful of how they would raise their money and how they would do it.
We put a lot of CIP projects that are completely unfunded, completely do not have any timelines.
But this is, but, but those are, those are different, those are all town-owned.
Yes.
See, those are, those are all town-owned, they're not coming through a five oh one C three, this is the only one.
Yeah, there's nobody funding money for it.
Yeah. So like, for example, the farmer's market, you know, they had raised some money for the expansion and they gave that. So that was a PPP, like, you know, part of partnership. Here, I don't know, all they said is they have fifteen thousand, is that the max that they have raised or they have raised more than?
I'm sorry, if I could. Because I sort of reacted strongly to that. They have not fundraised for years, ex, I mean, COVID and everything else, except for the veterans law that occurred just this past November. So that was their first foray into fundraising. So that, you know, that dramatically increased their fund balance. But that was just, you know, that's not a, that's not a fundraising plan. It was initial effort, probably more for exposure or scrutiny. Mayor, if you'd allow me, I've, I've just got a suggestion, a couple of suggestions to move us forward. In order to get onto your CIP prioritization, I'd say leave Veterans Memorial off. Again, you're going to touch this again several more times. And a million dollar project is much different than five, ten, twenty million dollar projects for us to see where you're at. So just pause your conversation and we can bring back more information after the Veterans Memorial Foundation has some additional feedback from your comments. That way Michael knows not to try to add it to a list here to get to your prioritization.
Would you like me to add this here, check in?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would like, is there a way we can put a timestamp on it to revisit it, like within a certain period of time?
Can I help with that?
Yeah, because, but the reason, let me finish, because I, I really want us to have a time that we put on what feedback they're going to give and whether they can raise the money or not. And if they can't raise the money, then I would suppose that within a six-month period of time or maybe longer than that, that we would take over the project.
We, we have a discussion.
Can we discuss that?
But, well, I have some.
I'm just telling you what I'm in favor of.
Yeah, I'm just trying to soften it.
Yeah, I don't want to give them a six-month time.
We have to put some time limit on it. I mean, we have to show, we have to have some, maybe we make it a year. But what I'm saying is, I don't want to be, I don't want to be in the same place a year from now where we're going to help them or whatever, but if we don't raise the money that we need to raise, then we're not going to have a Veterans Memorial, we're going to be here two years from now, three years from now, saying not. So something's got to change.
But the thing is, I'm just going to say that when, you know, we've talked about, Martha talked about the fact that some of the members citing the cost weren't on board, they weren't sure, you know, they want something different. But the fact is, they, they have a design because the town supported it and paid for it. But I mean, I don't think, there aren't any appetite to go back to the well for another design? Like based on, based on what, what appear to me to be totally different specifications and considerations? Like I, I mean, I think this is the design we're moving toward, you know?
And it was based on extensive stakeholder input, iterations. Again, they had unrealistic expectations. The site is half a million dollars of this project. So I think they were thinking well below that, just the site work on this project is, is low. And again, and they, again, they had a gut reaction versus more an extensive discussion. And we also present here what council has to say. Council likes this design, it's, it's met the criteria, I think that was very clear.
I thought it was better than Wilmington's Veterans Memorial.
I mean, seriously, yeah, I mean, and that's a way bigger city, ours is awesome.
Again, I agree that a timestamp discussion is, is different. You also are going to still have to prioritize this project with all the other projects you want, even if you put it on a CIP and you are going to be able to revisit it. I'm just trying to get us forward now, we've got less than an hour left for a critical part of your day. I, I'd also suggest that, that we hold a project readiness question to get, what, you see what you've got? And I know at least Mayor Protem suggested she wasn't through with Crabtree Creek Nature Park discussion.
Well, I don't think, I am near consensus.
So, so I think that perhaps again, moving with ball, let's see where council's prioritizing that as a group in this exercise that may help, help with that continued discussion of that project.
So question just to make sure, so right now Crabtree Creek Nature Park is not up here, is that something?
Then I probably would add it, I would add that one. Again, council, I'm, I'm making a suggestion for council to consider.
Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, but so, but it's already, we've already talked about it. So that's why I'm, what, maybe when we. Yes, but, so, but it's already, we've already talked about it, so that's why I'm, what, maybe when we get here. Yes, and then when we get here to instructions about what we're doing, I have more questions.
It was about funding.
Can, can you explain the, um, scoring there that like?
Yes, I will, I will go through, I will go through all of that in just, in just one minute.
We're gonna just slide and then we'll.
Yeah, Jeannie had, she wanted to add.
Let me just remind, remind council, you know, as you talk about Veterans Memorial and even Crabtree Creek Nature Park might be a little bit more immediately. When you talk about Veterans Memorial and you talk about this timestamp, remember you touch CIP every fiscal year. And you can have another checkpoint with these kinds of projects and allow that veterans group to move, get more information. And you can have these, these things running in parallel and have another point, another nexus check in with CIP and with the budget process. So I'm just reminding you, we don't just do every four-year major update and every two-year refresh. We actually touch it every single year to fold in new things, new influences. And I'm saying to you that the Veterans Memorial, if you give them time, you might consider that to actually influence something that you need to recheck on with new information at the next interval with the budget process.
Can I just say something about adding CCNP up here? CCNP currently is, is a bond project, like, it's, it's, we're, we're, we're doing it, unless I really misunderstand the situation, we're doing it as part of.
It was a bond project, but it was swapped out for PPI, so it'd be paid out of PPI.
Right, 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 okay.
So that is still, you know, within your discretion to make that change. And I think based on what we heard yesterday, there's not clarification on that, so I think it makes sense to add it up here to see where everybody's at.
But I guess the thing, I get, oh, I'm sorry, Donna.
No.
What, what I was asking was, it, it's in this year's budget, so it's not really, it's not a long-term project. It's basically a do it this year or allocate the money some, like, we're not talking about, we're not talking about kicking the can down the road again on CCNP, right? We're basically, if there's a decision to be made, it's do it or not. Yeah, I don't think it's the same as the other projects.
That's the most pressing question is, is if you don't intend to do it now and, and what would happen with those monies? But you could theoretically push it further down, you know, that.
I'm not advocating either way, I'm just, okay, to me it's different, but okay.
And it is, it is in the larger calculation, additional money would have to be found.
Can I say something? So the whole, the reason why the, 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 um, trigger for the Crabtree Nature Park being, coming out of the payment and lose opposed to the bond was because we had consensus on the council that we wanted to push the timeline for this nature park earlier, because originally it was like twenty-twenty-seven or something. So the staff went back and did their little magic that they do and, um.
Project magic.
Pick some money off the mustard.
Brought it up for us because that was our direction at the time. So at some point in time, not that long ago, we had consensus from the council that Crabtree Nature Park was important to us and we wanted to do it sooner rather than later.
Thank you for that reminder.
That's correct, and then, yes.
Are you talking about that now? Cause I, I have more things I want to say.
I think the town manager had a great suggestion, let's try to get into it and then that will help inform what the council's appetite is.
I mean, I'd like to hear Liz's comments before I put a sticker one way or the other, actually, if that's okay.
So, I, I, well, yeah, I was gonna say, before we do stickers, I was gonna say what it was, one way or the other. You know, I don't, I'm not even sure why we're having this conversation, quite frankly, because we recently had, I agree with Donna a hundred percent. We recently had this conversation, we talked about, we were okay with swapping the actual funding source, but we wanted to make sure it moved forward and we had consensus. So I'm a little concerned why we're even having the conversation right now.
Exactly.
And, and honestly, I think if we're worried because it's going over five hundred K right now, if, if councils had worried about projects going over, we wouldn't have a greenway in this town. We wouldn't have Church Street Park, we wouldn't have all the phases at Morseville Community Park, we wouldn't have the road improvement projects we have. Almost every project we do goes over budget.
The whole town would be dirt.
Because we go so slow on everything.
So, you know, for that to be a reason to consider swapping it out for two projects that we haven't even talked about, we have no thought behind them, they're years out, I, I really, I have deep concerns about that.
I would second that.
Anyone else wanna talk about CCNP anymore before we do?
I wanna ask if we can do the two projects in question, can we then do them out of bond money? Can we take bond money and do Wake Tech Parkland and Markham Parkland?
So your question is, could we, yeah, could we use the bond funds to support the Markham and the Wake Tech Parkland concepts?
Yeah.
And Jeannie can correct me if I'm wrong, but a part of it is timeline, depending on the timing would happen. Yes, you have flexibility in the parks portion of the bond funds to support in general for parks and recreation projects.
So the money that was designated, so technically what you're saying is the money that came as identified for land acquisition for parks, the bond language was flexible enough that you could use it for building parks. But that's a shift from buying land to out, now building parks, I'm just making that clarification. So we have talked about, talked about what we said to the body, but that is the bond language flexibility. Now, he is also a hundred percent correct, it's about timing and what priorities are and what affordability we can, can fit into that capacity is, is where we're trying to drive to. Priorities are very important to understand, which is why that we did a recheck on the Crabtree Creek Nature Park because we hear from council the importance of Markham, the importance of Wake Tech. Has the priority shifted? Because that's a big deal.
So Wake Tech Parkland and Markham Drive Parkland are, are on this list. Who was it?
Yes, they're related, again, they're related to us understanding, have your priorities shifted and changed? And even which one you see as higher priority. Yeah.
Can we get to the dots?
Yeah.
Well, but, but the Wake Tech Parkland, that's years out.
So again, timing is not a part of your prioritization, it's just where we start putting money in to prepare for the projects.
These have years on them, so that is kind of timing.
It's, it's the range of your CIP, yes, for planning purposes, I just, investments have to be balanced into those years.
Okay, it, it may make more sense if you let Michael explain.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Are we, everyone's great. Okay. Okay, so we have two prioritization exercises for you. And most of the posters you see around the room are for the first exercise. You should all have a total of twenty-two stickers.
She added, she did it very early yesterday, prematurely.
You should have a total of, so we have twenty-two projects. I guess if we're gonna do CCNP, they need one more sticker. So you should have one sticker.
So I'm gonna say again, I don't know why we're even putting, I don't know why we're repriorit- reprioritizing that one, we've already talked about funding it. That, that's where I have a fundamental problem with that.
Let's see.
It's already in our budget.
It's already in our budget, it's already in our budget.
Yeah, I guess one, probably from a staff standpoint, with the additional eight hundred thousand dollars that we would likely have to identify with the construction, that's eight hundred thousand dollars that could be used for other projects, is that part of, I know, one of the reasons, I think you brought it back to you, is because that's. I think the other reason we brought that, again, understand completely where you're at, is that when, the last conversation you had about Crabtree Creek, we didn't know about the fact that we were gonna have these seventeen acres adjacent to Wake Tech and didn't know that we had the potential for moving forward with an initial project at Markham in conjunction with Wake County as far as what that might look like. That's part of why it's here, again, understand what you're saying, but it's not just about the cost increase. So what we did hear comments that, oh, now we've got this, maybe we need to do that. So we felt it was appropriate to make sure we weren't missing any comments and just had council consensus around it. But I, but I hear what you're saying there, but.
The Markham property, you're working with Wake County, did they, I know the initial conversation said that we would not be allowed to use the water or they had some restrictions. Are they flex that or are they still sitting on the same thing? Because that's a critical piece for me, because I was underscating like Bond Park where you can have the paddle boats or cacking in that thing, so, so that's a new feature that, that town would.
We've had some conversation with them, we have a brief incoming, I think we're meeting in the next couple of weeks with the engineering group that's suggest, that's addressing that. Do you know offhand, I know there was a conversation that we could potentially do a launch off of that pad there. So I, I do believe today that there is some use of the water, I can't describe to you what that is, but that's my understanding today.
Okay, so that is, that is a point, but that is a critical piece for me.
Yes, understand.
Can, um, so what's the difference between high, medium, low?
That's your, how important, what is your priority for that project? Is it a high priority to you as a council member, me, and we're low? So it's, it's your understanding what your own prioritization is.
So you can put low, but you want it done in one to two years?
Right, so if you said, yeah, so if you said it's a, it's a lower priority project, but maybe it's, I don't know, making something up. It's a lower cost, it's a low priority, lower cost, though, we could achieve it, you know? And not as important to me, but maybe like it could be done in the first, next one to two years. So, so you should have twenty-three total stickers now, I think, twenty-three total projects. So every project is on one of these, um, posters around the room. So you'll be walking and you have one sticker per project. So when, when we, when we're all finished, there should be going across all of the, going across all of these, I should see a total of seven stickers for every project. Just wanna be clear, so we'll know if we have more or less than seven, we'll know there's an issue with one of those projects.
So what's the, what's the color coding?
So colors don't matter for this project, so we just needed stickers, so don't worry about colors. Ignore this one for right now. Anything to keep in mind? Ignore this sheet. Yeah, and this is for the second exercise, so, and this will be a faster exercise.
All right, let's go play.
So, and yeah, just as you go around, we can.
And we're not limited, everything can be a high priority in the first and second year. Cause I know this was on in that one over here, thank you.
Okay, so we can make.
Yeah, don't, don't forget, you've got the.
You could.
You've got the windows back here as well.
That's not, no, that should not, that's not the goal, the goal is to help us figure out what the prioritization is.
Did you do this one yet?
No.
The Cedar Hook Elementary.
I'm agreeing.
I'm just trying to figure out which one's.
I'm the one person to ask. One sticker per project.
Cause I know it's very, I know it's very.
The Cedar Hook, Cedar Hook Elementary.
Yes.
We've got some project questions.
Project question.
Yes. So this would be lighting for, in conjunction with the new public high school, to join this area. Okay, for, it would be a lot of, tennis courts and softball.
Ah, there we go.
I just, because I wondered to ensure that's what it is, because.
Yeah, that, that's it, and then the only consideration there is it's just gonna have to be, it's gonna be time.
There's still one there.
Exactly.
The, yeah, it says that, why, why can't I go to a.
Oh, there you are.
Here I am.
Okay, um, so, the Recreation Multi-purpose Center, what is the, when you take out the senior program space? Lauren's just asking about, it's a forty-five thousand square foot facility, but targeted to accommodate a facility that's duly located within future phase of town center. I don't understand, once you take out the senior program space, I don't understand what the difference is, like, M A F C.
So, so this is going to provide, one is gonna provide community meeting space.
Okay.
Two is gonna provide park direct access.
He's on a mission.
Three is gonna provide attention.
He's tracking dogs, distributed.
Support facility, engine walking track, and then it's also gonna reduce the city's, you know, there as well. So you have one facility that addresses multiple needs.
Okay, so then, yes, so it's tall, so where's the twenty-two?
Is that four second?
Is it, maybe it's a larger name than the hot spot down there.
Cedar Hook District, the rule is, is we have had two separate projects out there that would do some improvements in the park. Um, that would help improve field conditions, help improve our home, keep it here more often. And just do some upgrades around some storage facilities. Yeah, that would still be, even though, even though the existing station's not, they still can be, I'm explaining for service, but it's still relocated and constructed. Now, I think it's several years, it's not broken, but it's.
So that's the reason I wondered, right, but, but this will still be.
But this is, this is already. Right, we're not losing the funds down there. This project is really just, like, some parking, marking adjustments, some other minor things. To deal with. So twenty-four, twenty-five.
And that's what we.
So I turned her off. No, 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 you're, you're.
See, I'm not, I mean, you know, I've seen one, two, three, five, five blocks, so, I'm, I'm thinking time, so.
Well, yeah, I was just, just first starting, what's, what's the priority?
No, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, you could, you could, you could, that way, so if that's okay. Yeah.
The way I, you know.
So that's the second phase of the intersection improvements. And that's basically addressing where we had intersection improvement study and all of it, they looked at the time for intersection, if you want a list.
Yeah.
I can bring you the list of this.
I was gonna put it here. No, that's never gonna get done.
Well, I'll try the whole thing, I'll try the hotspot from down there.
Tough, isn't it, when you only have?
It's. So, I don't.
It's tough.
Those were the states too. So it's all the ones that had current, so it's like a road. Generally, that's, mostly turn.
It's about what you can afford and what the priorities are, and the monies have yet to be appropriated. It's, it's, it's identified in twenty-three, but you have, you have other things now that you set our priorities. I'm saying that honestly, I think we're not doing it in twenty-three, I just, I just don't see it happening. Well, I personally probably agree with that. And that's what I'm struggling, that's what I'm saying, like, it's way like downtown in this area, I mean.
I'm not making money to do it, because that's the, that's the priority.
State of the vision is always.
I, I just, which one I put now?
Right, I started moving around, now everybody's clustered over here, perfect.
Yeah, I can't.
But she was absolutely correct. Can I ask a question though? Are we talking about the project start, like, in other words?
If I say I'm.
Although, like, improvements, like, you know, coming and away, you know, like, you know, I like.
I've got one down left.
It's hard.
Yeah, I've got one down.
The, the, the project, I finished the one.
We need two people to do some Maple Creek Green, or something.
Basketball court is missing one.
Do you want me to check off who wants to have seven? Once you have all of these, that's definitely.
You did the cycle, we would be.
All right, basketball court still needs one.
We're missing from all the.
You over there on the.
I have one more and I can't remember.
I have one more and I can't remember.
Oh, like, I mean, with the.
The dots are struggling.
Yeah, Erin is helping by checking off all of there's seven.
Alright, there's several of it here that aren't done.
Basically, the parking is gonna be impacted by the road lighting, so for our.
It's not gonna happen up here, cause this one has eight for me.
I mean, there is now.
That's telling us something. If there's a check, do not put a sticker there.
Someone cheated.
Yes, someone cheated here. No, you cannot write to us there, no, step away.
There's no time to do that, I just wanna see it.
If there's seven dots there already, do not put another one.
So I didn't think I did this one.
So who went with those best dot are going?
If there, well, somebody is not counting because. Fire station two only has six. Existing fire station two, C fifty-four only has six. P house only has.
Four middle-aged women.
Women that've gone through mental.
All these need, or most of these need.
You have to vote on every project, one separate project.
I'm not saying no. What's phase two?
So, so I have four left, so if you can tell me which four are left.
Well, go over here, there's a whole bunch over here that only has.
Well, I don't know which one you would have voted on.
Current level of structural mischievous.
No, you had something like that, yeah.
And did you do basketball court?
I, I did not.
Do basketball. Okay, then that's you.
Yeah, there is one basket.
This is too confusing.
There is one missing.
Alright, I'm getting there.
The basketball court is missing one, and Somerville Creek is missing one. Recreation and multipurpose is missing.
I did that one.
Town center phase one has eight.
All of these are missing, at least one of them is checked.
Well, it means it's just that much more important.
I might have done that, cause I saw that one there, and there was one I didn't do.
I, I can't remember.
I had one dot left, and I booked it town center.
I did everyone I've done.
I see, do I put it there?
Do you wanna take one off?
No. This, this is. I don't know that it was me that put the eighth one on there, no, I could've sworn there was only six.
Well, the thing is, I have the same amount of dots, so we're not forgetting.
It, it, number, number the dots to be, and give us each a number.
We're associated in tax.
You have another exercise on, that's six, five plus one validings.
Really meant to be, you know. Winter comes out, obviously, that is, that's, you know, that's really what we're gonna do.
Oh, yeah, basketball, recreation, multipurpose. And did you go on to. Yeah. I'm trying again.
This was so great.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, no.
That's why I close my look, because the white is.
It's a four betterment. It's on the sea zone or face two betterment.
Why do betterment is regular work in betterment, it's better than my eyes.
This is.
Did you hit the treadmill right now? Brandon, did you hit the treadmill today?
I needed to sleep more than five hours today, so this is the first time this week I've done that, and I needed to, cause the rest of this week's not gonna be as better about that.
Really? It's all, it's all enjoyable.
There you go, nice.
I wonder if the interstate game will be second, they only put the interstate game second, I wonder.
Yes, I'll leave, no, I think.
Cause Mahone's, cause Mahone's prime time, right?
And.
So there's one, two.
I think he'll win, I think he'll win it.
God, that one's hard.
Brandon, this.
What did I say? Just checking that amount of dots, I think I got everything.
I can't remember which one I didn't do, I thought I did every one.
How many do you have left?
One.
One, I have two left. Mystic Red, we should have had a signature somehow.
No, we should have had color coding.
You still have stickers.
Let's, let's reconvene if we could, we still got some time before the break, I think we're probably as close as we're gonna get.
Yeah.
So Michael.
They have the five.
Looks like we're gonna be doing.
No.
Michael.
We were talking about, there's three things left, you have three dots, just do something.
Has ever, so, so.
I can't remember.
Councilor Karen Miller still has a couple of dots left, she's just not sure what he did or didn't vote on. He voted on the three that have.
So this is the first, but he doesn't do that.
Okay, I'm still.
We, we got.
And that, there'll be comparisons to really figure out what is truly floating through the top, remind them of that, okay?
I just said that.
Yes.
He swears he's. I don't know what, I'm sorry. He's gonna, or well, remind him of someone that's really important, this isn't the only touch.
Yes, right.
Wait a second, there's eight on the.
Yeah, we had, we had, hey, we need that, we, we, somebody's super.
That is like one of the ones that still have six, so no one claims, um.
I guess, I guess we're doing that project, maybe it's a true issue.
So that just became the highest, that just became the highest priority project.
Look for one that has.
Where, where do you think you didn't?
I thought I was doing one.
So this is last, sorry.
Did you do this on?
Babe, speak this one.
Uh, Parkway betterments or existing fire station two, to provide, yes.
So nature reminds you, this isn't the only point.
Somerville Creek still.
So who has, who has dots left? I have one left.
He has one.
You did. Well, and I guess.
This still needs one, but I, again, I think, I think. Alright, we're good.
We should just do it.
Once we get back into our group votes.
Okay, don't need to sit, but we're gonna come back to this. Michael, you have the floor.
Yes, we have, okay, I think we. So, we wrap up with the last exercise here, and I do just wanna remind you, this is just your first round of your own prioritization. So we'll be following up in February with more detailed project prioritization exercise for you, something like prepared comparison, or some other prioritization for you. So this is first pass, that will help us, we'll follow up with some more detailed exercises as well, so it's not, this isn't your only shot. We just wanna be clear about that. The second exercise we have for you is a little bit more simple, so yeah, you should get five stickers for this exercise. And this is where, I think I had shared yesterday with the team, one thing that you all could really help us with, and what you're, as council members, really in the best position to do is, what do you hear from the community, what's most important to the people that you talk to and you hear from in the community? So with this, this is, this second exercise is all on this one poster in the corner here, you'll have five stickers. So twenty-two projects, you're getting five stickers, and you are just placing one sticker on each of the five projects that you think are most important to the community based on what you hear.
Okay, will I ask a question now?
Yes.
So for example, if no one in town has ever spoken to me about a public works facility, but I still think it's the most critical project. But all we're measuring here is what are people talking to me about, is that's it?
So I think, and, getting, is it our priorities or our priorities filtered through?
We, I think it's braced on the premise of you frame your priorities both by what you hear in the community and what you know the town needs. That's your role as a council member.
It's way different.
You listen to the community, but you also know that there are things that have to occur, that you are responsible for delivering, that the community may not have awareness of. You're representing all of that.
See, I feel like I already represent all of them.
So in other words, public works, although the community may not understand the need for that building, don't understand the terrible conditions.
Or even be aware.
Now, or even be aware, they understand the value of having public works.
So you as a representative.
Guys, hold on, hold on a second. Take their paint to Morrisville, not to Amex, I mean, there's also that.
Paint their what?
Take their paint to Morrisville and Nobby.
Oh, so, so to that point, the community awareness and understanding is not at the same level as council's awareness and understanding. But you, I think as Giselle demonstrated, that public works facility will be an immense community benefit in the future. Sorry, which the community will realize, but they may not be aware of at this point. But you all have a very clear, I think, understanding of that.
And then, just a, just a comparative example, and I'll use basketball courts. You got heavy inquiry from a specific set of population to meet their needs versus what they may know the town is planning or what the real availability and need is, you have to balance both of those perspectives. Or is that the highest priority based on other things you've heard from the community? So again, just public demand, you may have information that balances into your rating.
Or like the tennis courts that we've only ever.
Correct.
No, tennis courts.
Just one more court.
So is.
Is there any meaning of the length of the thing? Is it a higher priority to the left?
No, 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 no. Not at all, no. So you got, you should have five stickers.
No, just go stick your.
Five most important projects to you based on you as a representative of the community, your understanding and your vision of the community, so.
You have five stickers, you wanna use all five stickers.
Use all five.
To any.
One per project.
Any project.
But just that poster.
Just this poster, yes. Yes, this poster.
Just those five stickers.
Seven different interpretations.
And you cannot put all five stickers on one project.
Aw, man. Oh, I speak to the people all the time. Well, I think that's fair.
Yeah. So what does it mean by community priority rating?
So, what are the five most important projects to you? So you represent the community, well, you as a council member, you sort, you represent the community, so what's part of you? What do you hear from the community, but also what is your, your understanding as a council member, what's most important to you?
So what's, does go off and pick this up, or do I? Okay, twenty for the next one, before the tent there?
You're gonna do your jobs, you did.
So I can go off.
You got it.
Hold on until.
Yeah, wait.
Listen, cause there's gonna be some quick follow-up to this.
We'll do, we'll do an actual break.
We need to break before time to.
You got time.
Put a sticker on the fire station. I mean, people talk to you generally about big courts and the town center, so stickers, but it's not like they say. You should be having. They just say, we need that town center. Not the stickers, the bare man.
But I'm not like in general. Well, we wanted in our.
Yeah.
We're much safer, you can't go to church.
Or, or Morrisville, or it could be Davis and Morrisville Carpenter.
I'm ready for my seven five stickers.
Carver.
No, yeah, no.
I tried to get it from Karen, she shut me down hard.
Michael appointed me sticker police yesterday, and I take that role very seriously.
Thank you.
A little bit scary right now.
Thank you for your service.
I'm stepmom, so I have a whole new set of powers.
That's right, yeah, you're, you're stepmom, so you have no powers, but you have a lot of pent up rage, and that's just as good.
How's your room body, what room were you in?
Me, eight oh one. I would like to mention how scary the corridor is where my room is, it's like, it's like the shining up there. Like I, I look out and I check for those creepy twins.
I promise I'm not taking a picture.
I'm taking like a bigger picture. Looking at my room like. What's that kind of hole where there would be a ghost?
Do you know my room?
All the wallpapers off the walls, and every piece that's supposed to be. There's wires hanging out. And like, and I sit in a car and roll the house.
Is it air?
No, I mean, I ordered it, but it's basically for some, it was probably just.
Yeah, cause Steve needs fire, and he's like. Plates shoved into the wall.
Councilmember, what was it?
Seven thirty-four.
Seven thirty-four.
Yeah, my room is really nice.
Thank you.
What is that?
No, we can, you can pop up at seven thirty, I think Mike is, I'll be quick, summary before we.
Yeah, every, everybody hang out until the ten thirty break.
What's the, what time is it?
It, not ten thirty.
Ten nineteen.
You know, she said that like I was gonna bolt out.
Well, I was ready, she, she was.
I mean, she put her foot in the bag. No, I'm not saying that I wouldn't, I'm just saying, she said it like she knew it, like she read my mind. Don't ask for more stickers, they are really hissy about that.
Sticker police, I told you. Trying to figure out what all this.
Do we have thirty-five stickers or?
Smacking.
There's no protein.
Must put a number, five.
There's two protein bars up on these Gatorades.
There you go, cause.
Oh, there's protein bars, I love that.
Good job, forty dots stickers.
This is nice.
Congratulations, we're in charge of forty-two million dollar budget, we can all count to five.
Do you want to put numbers for seven?
Or eight?
No, 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 I'm, I'm looking for clustering and agreement, um, that, that's one.
But you're, you wanna.
Yeah, yeah, this is the course.
But it's, but it's also important, even if there's one, that means there's a lot with nothing, so.
Yeah, that's true, that's a good point.
Because some of mine only have one, so of course I'm.
The good news is there's some common theme there between the clustering theme that might be referring here, some. Alright, turning it back over to Mark. I've got pictures of everything.
Alright. So, thanks for being good sports, appreciate your participation, hopefully a little too, it's very helpful for us. So we really appreciate your participation in discussion. Um, I think we, we're hoping to have a little more time to go through some of this. I think what we can do is before we bring back your next round of prioritization in February, we can kinda summarize some of these, the answers to some of these questions with what we've seen based on what you've done in the exercises today, instead of having that discussion now, just because we're against time. So if you guys are all comfortable with sort of having a, having that come back to you, a summary of these results in February, then that's what I would suggest, let's take it on our time.
See a couple of dots, yeah.
And I'd offer that what that could potentially and likely mean is, again, just some reordering of a rolling calendar agenda. You know, a reminder those things move, um, it's, it's those larger block items that, that influence that. Uh, may, again, there's still a couple roundtables. Again, I'm just gonna tell you, this is far more important work for you, if we need to use those slots than roundtable. But I'll, I haven't evaluated that yet for the next couple meetings, but just as this is coming back to you.
Hey, you know what, kind of tree nature park is not on that list.
On this list?
Yeah.
Right, I think we, I'm gonna say, and I don't know if you feel differently, but I think we probably have enough from what's been shared here.
Okay.
Um, and obviously, you know, continue to just keep you, you know, informed about the project, but I, I don't know, Gina or Mark, if you guys disagree with that.
I agree with that.
No, I think, I think you're right, I think from this one we have what we need to know.
Okay. It was just a touch point, but that's all that was. So I think you need to mention, you know, the intent of the two different kinds of exercises and the individual one that's gonna come. What, what we get from that is finding the common themes, the reoccurring, uh, common themes amongst council is why we do these iterations of different exercises, is looking at them through different lenses.
Yeah, I think it helps us with the two today, plus what we'll bring back, right, looking across those to see consistency, so it, it, it's helpful for us. So it's helpful for us, time-consuming with the detailed exercises, I know, too, but appreciate it. And this is just kind of outlook for the next several months, which I think we kind of already talked about. So I'm good to wrap up. I don't know if anybody else wants to make any, including comments before we break. But if not, we can wrap up. So we will head to break then, a few minutes early. Again, there's some things for you on the counter, there's coffee here. If you are not out of your room, if you would please get out of your room and bring your bags down here. If you've not already, don't worry about going to the desk. I'll check everybody out, I've got their room numbers, you don't need to worry about that.
Do you want the cards?
I don't care about the cards. They can get themselves back together at, sorry, Woolbury convening at ten forty-five, and Eric, I know the bus driver.
Yeah, I didn't, you didn't know his room number, his name?
Do you know his room number?
Yes, his name is Larry McDonald, if you want to, but he has a one o'clock checkout.
Okay. And I'm not, yeah, I'm not even worried about this.
His lights are right in my...
Oh, that's, yeah, I think I got it.
And I didn't know why I thought I was wearing my contacts, I can roll out that, but I sat down this morning.
They're all booked for Monday.
And that's it.
Did you get pictures of all of them? Would you like to go down and get your... You're welcome to have that.
Those don't, you know, do that.
Of course, we'll pack them while you sit.
I emailed it to myself, I'm gonna upload them. And I just go, I don't know, there's steam later, because it's darker, right? Or maybe we could try to...
Don't worry.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
Michael, I take pictures, have you taken pictures?
Yes.
Yes.
And then obviously a little...
Because the can light are...
I didn't bring sunglasses.
I've got, I've got photos.
Okay.
Unless you...
So I wanna maybe try to get this...
I'll take them back, yeah.
Put a ball cap?
I like have them on the wall there.
Obviously delete it. It's really painful.
Okay, let me see what we can do.
Or I'll save the back for some...
This is the back. I told him about, why can't the cans go off? You get the year that we had, and then we sold some of them off. But it's like, I'm thinking, you know...
Or we could cover our can, that's bothering.
No, 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 fire hazard, or whatever.
Okay, let me see what I can do. We'll take out a ball.
Do what you need to do.
We'll figure it out.
Yes, it's just really strong.
How about if we just move this table back, and you sit there? We just switch it in. That looks kind of shallow.
Yeah, we can turn out bad.
I want to be able to see you so that you can fully participate.
I can wear a funny hat and just, you know...
That's why I said ball cap might do it, if we go to the store or get one.
No, I'm not wearing ball cap.
Okay, just checking.
Why doesn't anything work now?
Oh, sorry, no.
Why isn't anything working? Nothing's changing.
It shouldn't be the right, yeah, it shouldn't be the right one. There we go.
Can we just have the square and the chandelier?
I like how you said that without going, read his stupid schedule, that was sad, thank you.
Now we are back from our quick break. Our next item is budget capacity and philosophy. We have ninety minutes to discuss. I'd like to pass to Martha Kay, to Jeanie Hooks, Director of Management Services, to facilitate this session.
Alright, Martha, do you have any openings or words of wisdom?
Listen to Jeanie.
Alright, so I just want to take a minute. You know, Sundays, I've been with you, you folks on retreats so many times. You know, Sundays are just always where we start losing, losing energy. So I just want to pause for a second. I want to thank Michael, and I want to also thank Brandon for being up here. That CIP is always a tough one. No matter how you structure exercise, it's all about choices, and when we have to make choices, it's really tough, because we have those intentions for the organization and the community, we want to do as much as we possibly can do. The nexus is, what can you really afford, and how can we make that happen, is what that is all about. But give Michael just a pause, please. And I do that intentionally, because I remember being in front of you all these years ago, my first CIP at historic church, and a bond referendum component to it, and I remember how tough it was. I remember trying to draw out the commonalities and interests, and it's a tough exercise for everybody. But I will say, you did give us information. You did give us a sense, and a glean into your lens, that will help us synthesize information as we bring that forward, and putting the pieces of the puzzle together for you, and alignment of funding. So I just wanted to share that with you. I'm all about trying to build the energy back in the room, is what I'm trying to do. Okay, are we ready to get going with this?
Sure.
Sure. So this is all about, again, we still want to stay up here. We're not problem-solving the dollars and cents of things yet. But we are talking about what is your philosophy of using the resources that you have authority to. So just keep that in perspective, and what I'm gonna go through with you is for each one of these areas in which you have some authority, I want to get a sense of where is the council entity in the spectrum of that source? How do you, how do you feel, what are you open to us providing as options, as opportunities? We need to know how flexible you are, and I hate to use this word, or inflexible you might be. Because you, that's you? Don't get there yet. Be open until that point, and then you can decide. So that's what this is really all about, and these are the major things that we really need to touch base on with you. Is everybody with me? Are we clear on the goals? Okay. Alright. So I tried to put together a little bit of a process for you, and it is going to be a staff facilitated exercise. This is the one I'm gonna probably try to help you with the most, because I think it is another one of those meatier conversations. Even though you're still at this philosophy level, it is, I'm trying to ask you some direct questions and get some response. That's really important. I think Bear Prentem remembers the days in which we asked, do you want to raise the taxes, or you don't want to raise the taxes? So we are really thinking of where your philosophy is there. So the objective, as I said, is just to understand and identify where are you alike on that spectrum and where you're not. And again, I talked about staying big picture, and then we're gonna, I'm gonna jump in before I go to the facilitated portion. I want to review some, you know, the budget capacity toolbox, the things in your toolbox and why you have authority. So we'll go and touch a little bit on those. I am probably gonna go and jump back to what is the process of this session after I talk about the toolbox. So if you'll just give me a little bit, I'm gonna jump back, that's, I might pivot a little bit to try to see if we could do a form of a speed approach, if that's, if we can do it. We'll see. Are you okay with that? So let's talk a little bit about the things that are in your toolbox. So your biggest authority, you know, that you have the most flexibility with, is your tax rate. People, people have, give you public dollars to the tax rate with the expectation of service delivery and creating tangible things that mean, that are meaningful to them in the community. That's why we ask that, tell us what, what do you want in your community, what are you value in your community? That's why that input is very important, and what you hear from the community, you as yourself in your networks. Because it all rolls back to a person's pocketbook, and what they perceive as affordable to them, and what they connect to that's meaningful. So what am I really aliving that to, is when I get in Mooresville one-on-one, and I put this question of what projects you want to do versus what resources would you give us to do it? It's inevitable, people were willing, there's a willingness to raise the rate at some point because they value so much what they said was important to them, and they want to be able to find balance. Now, that's the other underlying message here, what's affordable to them. The value of a penny on the tax rate is probably estimating around six seventy-five right now. That's an early estimate, and I will say, I'll need to touch point with more information that will come to really settle on if that really what I'm seeing or not. But right now, that's the fairly good estimate. So a penny on the tax rate, when a Mooresville one-on-one person looks at that and what you might be able to provide to them, that might be an enhancement, additional programs, or a debt service to a future project, if it's of value to them, it is, I want to pay the taxes to get some. Again, it still all comes back to the perception of the individual's what is affordable. But you have that capacity to raise that, that rate, to deliver services, to make tangible projects that the community wants and value. That's the most authority that you have, and that's most flexible. I gave you some information on the current growth rate right now. Again, I also said to you, this is really early stage for me to be able to know, am I gonna shift net revenue growth and increase it because of maybe what I might be seeing that needs to be evaluated, that is impacting tax base with McCrimmon Parkway, with the corridor? That's a really game changer, and we just need to know, can we move the needle now, or is it something a little further down the line? We've talked a lot about base budgets, we're not gonna go into that, but other than to say, forty-two point eight million dollars of your resources is really maintaining those existing services that exist today. So that's a big chunk of the resources that you have. Fund balance, you have a policy that you live to, that you hold yourself accountable to. And fund balance is really important to your future credit rating. So maintaining a healthy fund balance and not depleting it is also something in your toolbox we have to keep an eye on. While you have a healthy fund balance, it's not at the target of forty-five percent, but it is above the low or the minimum, which is twenty-five percent. So budget is all about balance for a reason, and that is that we are accountable to manage and be fiscally responsible to the resources that we have and what we believe to be sustainable and maintaining that sustainability in the future. And fund balance is one of those that falls in that. Debt ratio is the other capacity element here that has to be evaluated. You have a policy, again, that you've established that you live to, and that is also equally important to your credit rating, so that you can take on debt within the capacity to be able to bring in tangible projects. The debt ratio actually was improved between the last time Davenport, which is your financial advisors, Davenport and I got together and estimated the debt model that we based the bonds on, and that actually did include in that model all the works at a level that needs to be reevaluated. And we are, Michael and I are working with Davenport right now to really reassess that model and what that looks like. The good news is that the debt ratio that model was based on was much higher, meaning we had less capacity, and it's improved somewhat, so that builds in a little bit more that we can potentially work with. And that's where Michael and I are working with them, to see what that looks like. The other important authority that you have that has some flexibility, and then some, some areas that might be inflexible, is user service fees, user fees and service fees. So that's your parks fees, your development services fees primarily. The authority there is generally based on, for both of them, recovery of the cost to deliver the service. Development services falls in that category. Parks is more of a subsidized role. So I think the statement here is, we need to assess where that bar is. Are fees really established and set to generate revenue at the level that we expect? And that's just an exercise in evaluation, we really need to just take a hard look at it, because it does help the equation. Now, mind you, when I showed you yesterday the spectrum of where your largest sources were, development services and parks fee were further down the list. So they're important, but are, do they really move the bar a lot? Well, that depends. So you have to remain comparable to your neighboring communities when it comes to development fees. And then for service fees, you really have to keep an eye on the market and what you are working against. In this case, M A F C might fall in that category, because it's a slightly different service. And then you have to decide, are park fees, in your opinion, quality of life type things? Meaning that you want to continue to subsidize it, you don't want it to be a hundred percent cost recovery. Those are the philosophies that you have at play here. User fees, under that structure, they can help, but they're not significant enough that they're gonna really solve huge or bigger funding concerns. But I do want to put them on the radar because you have that authority, and we need to reevaluate that. The other one that we have, the other two that we really have are reserves that we set aside money for intentionally for future things, and that we have that, but we have a plan to use that through CIP. And then are we funding it at the level that we expect? I would say in our reserves, and I think Martha agrees with me, we're putting money aside, and we're taking it right back out. So what that indicates to us, we're not really building reserves at the level we probably anticipated or had the intent to build, but we are putting monies to work, it's just not accumulating as we probably expected. And I think that just means we might not be putting enough aside that will help us long-term, it's probably helping us short-term.
And I'll add, I just want to make it clear, it's not been willy-nilly decisions. We've taken advantage of opportunities, which, and then again, it does serve as a planning mechanism, and it has covered some cost overruns, but it leaves your fund balance intact, is perhaps the way I'd say. And again, we use all of these things, all as a mix, but again, probably not as attended, but not, we haven't been wasteful with those monies either. But again, that's how it works, practical application of those reserves.
Right. The true intent is to build them. We're using, we're building, and then we're turning around and using them, so we're putting them in play, and it actually has been extremely helpful that you've established these reserves. So I remember when we didn't have any reserves, and it was a difficult conversation to get us to putting reserve practice in play. So it's a wonderful strategy, but staying committed to it and funding it at the right level will help you long-term. And that's probably where we need to find, where is that real balance to make them function at the intent we originally tried to establish? The other one is ARPA. So ARPA, our ARPA specialist back there, he would tell you that the commitment of the remaining monies has to be programmed and put into fiscal year twenty-four, correct, Michael?
Count, so we have to have it all obligated and covered by end of calendar year twenty-four, so fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay.
Oh, so that's...
The fiscal year twenty-five and not twenty-four?
Yeah, calendar year twenty-four.
Okay, that's the calendar and fiscal year. I'm always in the fiscal year.
And I'll add, twenty-four and/or twenty-five, just as we have to deal with that fiscal year.
I think the point here, don't get hung up with the calendar year and the fiscal year, the point is we have to talk about it now, and we have to decide what is your perspective on how we leverage that remaining dollar amount, which is four point six million? Because we need to think about that ahead and get things established, you know, there's always logistics that we have to work through. So talking about this now is really very important so that we can move ahead on that. You heard from Chad last night that they have been working their money and spending and putting it in play in Wilmington.
And then just the layer of that is, as we look at fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, there's a secondary date out there is completion by, that matters what we might spend that money on, how long it takes us to execute completely that thing.
Can I ask a question about that, just to refresh my memory? I know that money, that could be a great flexibility, but is that for physical? That's not for like operational, that's not like for staffing, is it physical?
Great question. I'm gonna let Michael answer that.
Yeah, so reminder that it's a one-time source, so we, technically, we have the flexibility to use it for operations, but that's not really a sustainable source of funding for that, so obviously we're utilizing one-time use, but, but the law gives us the flexibility to use it for operating expenses.
Okay. Right, understanding, yeah, no, understanding it's a one-time source and one money runs out, the money runs out, and then you've got to, if you're hiring staff, you've got to figure out how to sustain that after this money runs out, understand, but, but we do have that.
It's not, so I say no, it's not just physical things.
Okay, thank you.
It's just, I think staff would just generally tell you, focus on your one-time things versus recurring expenditures.
So, easy, easy thing is that Michael's actually currently funded through ARPA as salary, but we'll have to absorb him back in the general, and that's the situation it creates, moving the decision to sort of shift it over to operations that aren't physical things, but people.
I love talking around.
So, so, I just want to clarify, so the preference would be one-time things, right? Not staff positions and things like that reoccurring, that would be the preference? Would already done the small business program, you know, the program, would there be opportunities of expanding that with this money, or would the preference be just having staff come back and just saying, you know, these are the things that we think we could use this money for to help the town?
Here's how I would answer that, I would say that, that we need to hear from you what your preference is, that's an important area that we need to try to leverage this resource to, and we can probably help with the how and what fits best. How would you?
Yeah, I feel specifically to Councilmember Rouse's small business, I would tell you, we're not far enough along about integrating a program to talk about expanding it yet. I think the long-term strategy is recognizing small business support, as council would decide it wants to be on a long-term sustainable, would have to be incorporated into recurring base budget appropriations.
Yeah, and the follow-up, and I think it's a similar situation with affordable housing, which kind of in our early stages doing another work session, right? Not there yet.
So you have nothing in the budget for affordable housing at this point?
But would we be able to park some money for this if we decided we want to do something with affordable housing, or would you?
Again, I'll go back to Jeannie. C- council will have to talk about, so a jump start versus it would ultimately have to become sustainable. It would also ultimately, with affordable housing, be based on what council's final decision is about how that program gets implemented, capital, recurring, upgrading, we're still in that discussion.
Yes.
Okay, so we're getting into, we had a slide, no, 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 that's great, that's great. So you're in the right, the right train of thought. We've got a slide that's going to help prompt these kinds of questions and feed that on ARPA specifically. So again, I'm fine with the brain, it's all about the brain. I'm going to go through quickly and just let you know what we're talking about. So it's property taxes, I have discussion prompts, and I've given you some things to remember. I've got solid waste fee, again, discussion prompts, things to remember, fund balance, other reserves, and ARPA. And then I'm going to, I'm going to open up to stormwater and other fees, I'm going to just talk about that, I don't necessarily have discussion prompts, just to share some information. So, let's see, let me turn that again. So I really have one, two, three, four, five facets that we need to have some individual time with, can, so now we need to go back to a process slide. So it is important we focus on, to keep us on track as best we can, can we commit to spend twenty minutes maybe on each of these five facets?
How about fifteen, and then if we need an extra five, then we'll use it.
And also, that would help us build in some discussion of what our overall budgeting philosophy is and what, because there may be areas that we're interested in talking about first, and then maybe areas that are a non-starter for the whole council, you know? So I think that to, to get an idea of where everybody's at, generally speaking, would be five or seven minutes, well, there's seven of us, seven minutes well spent.
So fifteen minutes?
So it, so what I, I like what, where you're going, maybe do five minutes on the topic, where are we, and then the fifteen-minute discussion after that.
So, just a clarification for me, are you saying everybody weighs in rapid response about their first, where they're at, and then you discuss, is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm suggesting.
It really helps us get to the.
Let me offer this to you, so you did really well with the post-it notes individually. Does that complicate it for you, would you rather do the rapid fire?
What would be on the post-it notes, Jeannie?
So you would be responding to the prompt questions?
Would you read them?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think this is important to have a discussion about, frankly, fifteen, twenty minutes is not going to be enough. I think these are, these are so important.
I'm not saying don't talk about it, I think the prompt on the, or the responses on the post-it notes, your individual thoughts, and putting them up there in response to the three questions for property taxes, I can see where there's some common themes, and then we can go back to discussing those as a collective group. So it's just an individual dump of what you feel for each of the questions, put them up there, let's see if Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson has a similar thought to Councilmember Fender and Councilmember Rouse. It helps me identify where common themes are based on your individual offload. It just takes time to do this, and then we can focus on where you're like and where maybe you're not alike in your discussion.
I just think we get the same thing going around the room, I think the post-it notes, a layer of perplexity that.
It's a good tool with more time.
Yeah, I think it helped in the other case. I think this is a different situation.
We lose time.
We do lose time here. I'm good with what you're good with, this is not any preference of mine at all, I'm trying to find what works for this group, and I do agree maybe today, not enough time, maybe the post-it notes don't work for you.
It's speed dating.
Okay, we're going to do some. So what I do need from you, I need a commitment of stay focused and succinct on what you're delivering and offloading with each other in this com, this, this five-minute conversation. And I, and, and can I just go around the room and say what you're feeling? What did, what do you want to say? Is that okay that we do it that way? Little more structure?
You need a timekeeper?
Please.
Thank you.
So we agreed to five minutes of doing that? Going around the room? Okay. Okay, I was a little prepared. I did miss one, and that's ARPA.
Jeannie, can I just also ask that you start with Councilmember Fender first, but the next time start with a different Councilmember?
Absolutely.
Yeah, start with Tish.
Rapid fire in my brain right now.
Well, that is possible.
So, yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question for, I'm going to ask them halfway. Five minutes just for the quick round.
That's what they're agreeing to, and I'm going to go one by one. They're going to give me a thought in response to the question, kind of, that's up here. Everybody's nodding and agreeing with me, that's the process.
Let's try it, we can adjust.
We can adjust. I'm all about adjusting. Please don't get offended if I get, if I walk towards you, don't think that's a recipe. This room, this is a little bit of a hole right here, so I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you even though we're that close. Okay, everybody ready?
Yes.
Let's engage the brain. Property taxes, I've given you some things to remember, I'm not going to go over all of those, I just want you to keep them in mind as I go around the room and we, we, you give me information. The first one, I've actually put this question in front of you before, what is your philosophical taxing propensity? So how full is the glass and what spectrum are you coming from? Is it that you want to align needs to the available resources? Or is it that you want to raise resources to align to the level of needs that you identify? That's a really different philosophy between the two.
Oh, we're doing one question at a time?
One question.
I am something in between.
I'm going to pay with in-between. I don't think I put that there. So we got a between.
So I'm in-between and I want the voters to support tax increases, so if we ask for a bond, or if we ask the voters to support requests for additional funding.
Very good.
My preference is going to be in order of things that touch the voters the least. So on property tax, I'm going to be wanting to align the needs and wants to the identifiable, identifiable resources. I want to be, I, yeah.
Needs to resources?
Yes.
To available, that's important, I could, available resources.
Yes.
And you please let me know if I'm interpreting wrong.
But I think that's the words that you have, but what I'm saying is, I would like to consider property tax last as a capacity increasing tool.
Okay, so you're open to that, but only after you know what we can do with what we have and what's left and remaining?
I think we should use everything else first, I wouldn't say I'm, I wouldn't really say I'm open to it, I would have to be convinced.
Okay. So this is first, and I think second is possible. Okay, possible.
So I'm going to say ditto. I, I, I think we need, you know, I am not raising resources to align to needs and wants, because as we just looked at this morning, we have a lot of needs and wants, we're not going to be able to fund all of those. I wouldn't raise, we'd have to double the tax rate to be able to fund everything we want, so. But I, I would say I'm also open, but I, we need to align our needs and wants to identify available resources.
Okay, I'm putting tick marks just to identify there's a common interest there. Mayor?
So I'm coming a little differently at it. I believe that we have a lot of needs that are going unmet that the residents wish to do, so I would be willing to raise resources, I would be willing to increase the property tax, to be very clear, in order to meet more of the needs that are identified that I support, and it sounds like the council supports to a certain extent as well.
Okay, raise to meet the needs.
I guess I'm.
So look back at the question.
Yeah, what is my, okay, so I think my take on this is that, I, I guess I'm, I'm sort of in-between in that, you know, I want to balance, you know, considering the impact it has on our business community, people in the community after COVID that have, you know, lost their jobs, that, you know, in terms of just being sensitive to tax rates. But at the same time, what I will say is this, my confidence has grown so much in the administration and staff in terms of what I've been able to see us execute, absolutely excellent, you know, I mean, just in terms of just how much we've done in so many different areas, so I'm, I'm not going to listen to one or two council members or even residents to say, let's increase the tax to outline all our capacity to do things that can even make us even further accelerate our success as a town, because clearly Morseville today is on the map compared to like twelve years ago. Everywhere I go, we go, they're talking about all the great stuff we're doing. So that's really my comeback, is if you guys, as we go through the budget process, really being, you know, we can't do everything, but if you need additional resources, what specific initiatives and programs would those be, resources be tied to, where you don't have enough resource?
May I interpret then, what I think I hear you saying, is that okay?
Yeah.
I think you're somewhere in-between.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to increasing the tax rate, but I just want to make sure that that decision's going to be made by what the staff is also saying.
Okay, I need to, the Councilmember Caramella, but are you okay if I put you as an in-between?
Yeah.
Is it, so for, sorry, Councilmember Caramella, is it something in-between or between voter support? That's different?
Something in-between.
Okay. Council, thank you.
For me, I'm somewhere in-between, but if you're increasing taxes, then my key important messaging is what are the residents getting benefit out of that?
Is that voter support? More than just an in-between?
Voter support is just a part of it, it's just.
Maybe it's stakeholder support, maybe we can relabel mine to expand it to stakeholder?
Yeah, like, you know, because the voters is, like, the taxes for everyone, not just for the voters.
It's not just voters, so I like to amend mine to say state, with stakeholder support, and that way, it's a little bit.
And, and what is front-facing, pretty much, you know, like, what are the, you know, if I go and say to any other community, okay, we want to raise, and say, what are we getting? So I don't have an answer for that till I get that answer or convinced.
Well, I've put you here, but I've added stakeholder with agreement from Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson. Okay, great, that was almost within five minutes. Can we move to the next question, please? Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a goal to be the lowest tax rate in Wade County? I'm actually going to start with.
It'd be easy. No.
Weed my lips, no, few taxes.
No, but there's a goal not to hike up the tax rate. What's that word? Suddenly, there's a goal to avoid sudden tax increases, to me. I don't need to be the lowest tax rate, I just, you know, I just don't want people to get surprised by an increase.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Robati on that.
I agree with that too, but I'm a no.
But you're a no more than, go back.
I'm a no, it's, that's just not possible, given carry.
Well, given our styles.
No.
Yeah.
No, but you're, you're just comparing the country, but the key is every town is unique, you know, based on the population, based on the revenue and what they do, so the question is like kind of a double ace, so like, you know, you want, because tax and carry might be like different, you know, but you can get more.
Economy's a scale aggregator, yes.
Yeah, and so it's sort of.
And they're able to expand.
They are, we are not.
To their own particular flow.
This has been a question that you all have had in front of you before because of the sense of what you are sharing with staff, so clarity, you are a no.
Absolutely.
You know, Jeannie, I'm also a no, you could, I don't need any qualifiers, I'm a no, that's not a goal for me.
Councilmember Fender?
No.
Okay, that's, that's extremely clear, I appreciate you saying reasonable and that folks are aware, I believe that is really, staff is all around that as well, we embrace that and know how important it is. Excellent, thank you. Next one? Ready? Hey, was that a record?
That was two minutes, y'all are killing it.
Okay, so the next one is, is there a willingness to leverage other strategies to repurpose a taxing capacity to meet operational needs of a growing service demand?
Yeah, it's really ambiguous.
I was just going to say, I need to qualify, I need some more.
So, okay, is there a willingness to leverage other strategies to repurpose taxing authority? So what you have, I'm going to be straight.
Yeah, please.
I'm always like using these building things, everything in life for me is about layers. So this is building. The next slide is about stormwater fee, can we move to that slide?
Solid waste.
Sorry, sorry, solid waste, stormwater's in the last. Can we move to that slide, to this question, and talk about solid waste and what your feeling is around what you have in your control?
Then let's skip this question.
I am, I'm proposing.
Is that the only other strategy under discussion?
It's not, uh, it's not.
I mean, that's essentially.
The one that makes the most, I'm sorry, I didn't have you, the one that's the most impactful.
I mean, answering this question, I think it's somewhat already been answered by the first question, like where Anne said, yes, but I want to look at other strategies or sources, right? So to me, that means.
Right, so we could skip right to solid rates.
Yeah, this question is, the answer question is yes.
Just if I could just sort of add a clarification thing that's really important to staff to hear, it's, do you make this resource available in the budget or not? That's just a different nuance than raising resources. It's keeping some of what you pay for in your property tax rate, paying for solid waste versus releasing that capacity. That's the core question.
Right, but I, I think we can skip this last question because it's a, you're really targeting solid waste, so let's just talk about solid waste.
And we're targeting solid waste because of the amount that it represents. It could be two cents, almost two and a half cents, depending on how it inflates. It is specifically targeting a residential-based service only, and you're using taxes that all people pay that aren't receiving that level of service. Now, that's it. Mayor and I have had this discussion before, it's your philosophical position on what, how you feel about that. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying the facts, to me, as a staff person, is a residential-based service. I respect your position that we've talked about before. So we're ready to talk about solid waste fee.
Can, can I just ask the question, 'cause I thought that the last time we talked about solid waste, this might have been something else, so just refresh my memory. We said that we had originally wanted like fifty dollars, but then we said that that would be difficult for businesses, so we went twenty-five, and that's.
I apologize.
I was still on a stormwater before, so.
All right, but that's a, it's still a valid philosophy to apply to this situation.
What is the expectation of today? I mean, 'cause I still, I'm looking at, well, I haven't really decided, I'm looking at the cost, the pros and cons of each one, you know, keeping it in the tax rate.
What do we pay today? That's.
What do you need from us?
What, what do we pay today out of our tax rate?
So it's about one point four million dollars, it's escalating for solid waste, and if you apply the penny on the tax rate, you could really be talking about two cents that could be leveraged for project debt, for expanding operations. We talked yesterday about the fact we have a lot of people resources we need, how are we going to pay for this?
So that's helpful, because right now with the base budget that it is, it sounds to me like our waste disposal fee is two cents of our base budget. So your question about, you know, would you like to move that two cents out to a user fee directly to the residents?
To pay for the service.
And then the backfill of the two cents would be available in the budget for discussion?
Correct, that's that repurposed philosophy.
Did I nail it?
Okay.
It's, it's like increasing the tax rate by two cents.
It's to the, it's a user fee.
To the users that get the service.
It's a user.
Now, I'm gonna get to you.
That's why I'm confused, but anyway, just let it.
Well, hold on, let me, let me get to you, but let me say this, you can choose, is it an all, meaning hundred percent cost recovery, if it's a user fee that way, or you could apply the Parks and Recs approach, that it's a subsidized service? So just keep that in mind, but is it your philosophy that you want to shift this model of it being a part of the tax base, a part of the tax rate, or do you wanna shift to a user fee-based model, which is some level of cost recovery to provide a service to the people that are using the service? Council member Brown?
Well, my question is, and it's maybe a really stupid question, but I just don't understand the difference from a staff perspective of, we could increase the tax two cent from what it is now and get that extra capacity, why is it important to the staff to have the, the user fee, point number one? I mean, just what, what, I'm trying to understand, I understand the one point eight million or whatever it is would be, would be extra capacity that we would have outside that budget?
Would you like to expand on that?
So the core philosophy is user fees are designed to pay for things that only a certain segment of your community benefit from. That's the fundamental approach when you establish user fees. And in, and in this case, everybody pays property taxes, commercial, and some segment of our residential, a very small part, do not get the value of this out of their property tax rate.
And there's only one other municipality in Wade County that does it this way, right?
That's accurate, yeah. And it does, it is, it is, again, secondary is, is the, it is important sometimes for people to understand what they're paying for directly. So a quick example for solid waste would be, you know, getting way down in the weeds to talk about how we might structure a fee, but people might pay more attention to what they throw away and how they handle that if, if recycling is in or out, that's just an example that I'm trying to suggest.
So the capacity you would have from the fee could then be attached to specific programs as well, like things that we could do with that millions of dollars?
The capacity that's put back in, the fact that we have that two cents that's currently being, that's currently paying for this service, we can now use for other operations or for other debt, yes.
Yeah, this is a recurring opportunity.
Without changing the tax rate from thirty-nine cents, we would be rebuilding capacity within the existing tax rate to, to move to something new and emerging.
But if you kept it the way it is, then the way I look at it, you're, you're giving the businesses a break, and then you're still offering the service to the, 'cause they're subsidizing it.
The businesses currently say they're paying for something they don't benefit from.
Can we, so, ready?
Can we go to Anne?
I got it.
All right, so what I'm gonna propose, are you ready, Anne?
I'm ready.
What's the next question? All right, so can I take these two, top two questions together? I feel like they relate, they relate, this is just how Jeanie offloaded, offloaded her brain when she was preparing these slides. I feel like if you're answering yes to this question, you're really telling me that it's a, you see it as a user-based fee service. Are we okay with that? So, so are you willing, or what's your, where are you on the spectrum of interest in leveraging of your fee authority for this service to rebuild some capacity back in the existing tax rate? Okay, that's, is that different for you?
That's not clear for me.
Okay.
'Cause there's, we just talked about, there's multiple ways to actually leverage this. You can increase the tax rate, or you can go to a user fee-based service, that.
That's how that's what the question is.
Yeah. Is it better to ask it that way? Do you want to increase the tax rate for other things, or do you want to use, use the, use the user fee?
This isn't the only alternative, though.
I'm sorry, I didn't say what you said.
If I could, Jean, I think.
Go ahead, I'm just helping here.
No, so I'm about to answer this question in a way that might help.
Okay.
If that, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I am, I am philosophically, I believe that, could you just, so I can see your garbage, thank you, sorry. If I'm philosophically, I believe that it should be a user-based service. I don't think that it's fair to tax people with property taxes for things that they don't get. Having said that, I would, I would not support a, a full-on, this is now a user fee, I think that's just a two percent tax, like, I think it's, it's, people are not gonna, gonna feel the difference pocketbook-wise between a two percent tax rate, but it's not a tax increase, it's a stormwater, or a solid waste fee. I would support a stepped up, you know, point five cents this time and continue, like, continue it as a partially subsidized fee as we step up toward a fully user-based service. I, so I think we can, you know, if we levy a small, you know, step it up to say that, to phase in an approach. Phase in an approach where we would go from a tax-supported service to a user-based supported service.
But your question that she's posing is really to look at, do you see it as a user-based fee?
And I'm saying, I see it as a user-based fee, but I think that it is a big switch to take two cents on a, I mean, you could say that it's not two cents on the tax rate, but I'm saying that people are still gonna have to pay out the money as if it was. So I, I think that is too, that's too big of a work.
That's too harsh.
Let me do a check-in because of how you.
And let me, I just really need to, to, again, remember, property tax is not equal for everybody that pays it. So somebody that has a three hundred thousand dollar house versus somebody that has a five hundred thousand dollar house are paying different levels towards that solid waste fee when it's a property tax rate. The solid waste service costs both of those properties the same thing to deliver. I'm just wondering, I think that's just important information to, to have.
That is exceptionally important information, because to me, it means that the solid waste fee is gonna impact lower-income households more.
You know.
It's gonna, because it's gonna be the same, somebody that's now paying less property taxes would pay the same, so this person's costs are gonna come up, this person's costs are gonna come down. That matters to me.
No, somebody, somebody who's in a million-dollar house or a three-million-dollar house, they're paying a greater share of their taxes, of their portion of this, of what it costs to service them solid waste.
No.
No.
No, that's accurate.
Well, that's accurate.
Just like they're paying more for the voters, they're paying more for the person right, everything.
If we pull out the solid.
If you pull it out, it's regressive.
Okay, I'll do one point each.
So, so if I could finish my thought, so the reverse is true, somebody who's in a three hundred thousand dollar house is not paying their share of the solid waste fee at this time. So we are making it more affordable for them to remain here in the town of Morseville, in my opinion.
But their tax rate is not gonna go down, so that person that's in the smaller house is gonna still same, pay the same amount, and their new user fee will be the same as the million-dollar house. The million-dollar house will still pay the same tax rate as they do today, and they will pay the same amount.
So they will, they will have an increase in what they have to pay. If you, if we, I don't, I've not done this, the math myself, but somebody in a three hundred thousand dollar house, if you give them a solid waste user fee, which is what you're proposing here.
Be matchy-matchy with everyone.
They will end up paying more than they are paying now through their tax rate.
So I'm saying that, I'm saying that, let's say that we, okay, I'm saying that, let's say that we phase it in.
It's an added fee, it's not a switch.
Right, everybody would pay the same hundred dollars across the board.
Right.
If we do like a half a cent or whatever, right? If we phase it in, everybody will get the same hundred-dollar bill for solid waste across the board. Everybody will continue to pay the exact same amount of property taxes.
Yes.
We're not taking that money out of their property taxes.
We could.
We won't.
Right.
We could.
That's about.
I think we can.
Well, the goal is to build capacity, so that would just be a, a flat net.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we could, it is an option.
But since everyone will pay it the same, that's why I'm support, that's why I would support a phased-in approach, because it, to me, that's a big, that's gonna be a big ask.
So that, so that's solving the, the equation, but I, I think your philosophy is you're open to understanding if, if a user fee can be used as a hybrid between the tax rate and a user fee.
My philosophy, my philosophy is, Jeanie, my philosophy is literally, I don't want anybody to get sucked with a big bill, no matter where it comes from. That is my, that's my philosophy. It may not be mayor.
No, I hear you.
You know.
Let's go.
So we had a question?
No, 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 no.
Are you good?
No.
Okay, so I'm back on to my questions.
We need to.
So it's Liz's turn. So let, let me clarify what I was saying, 'cause we were talking about if you do a two-cent tax increase versus sending someone a bill. I'm telling you, a two-cent tax increase would make it more affordable for those on the lower affordable housing here in the town of Morseville versus the user fee. I need to see the map, but I'm telling you, my God is telling me that.
I think you're right about that.
'Cause it's subsidized.
I wasn't thinking about property taxes versus solid waste speed, I was just trying to explain how the solid waste speed could be implemented and the impact on low-income households, so.
I'm thinking that too.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're, you're right about that.
And if you look back at the citizen survey, the residences, this town were concerned about affordability in this town. I think that means for themselves, they're worried about the affordability for themselves to remain here in the town of Morseville.
So I hear tax rate.
That's how I'm interpreting, I'm just telling you, we're on, we're talking about philosophy here, so I'm coming from a hard no right now.
Okay, I'm hearing tax rate subsidy.
No, I shouldn't say hard no, I'm coming from a no right now. I need a lot convincing, I need a lot more details and make a lot more information.
So I heard tax rate subsidy from you, that sort of was meaningful to me, that's really what exists today. You feel there's more equity, more balance there? Is that what you're saying, a hard no on the user fee approach?
Yes, yes, I'm, not a hard no, I don't wanna say hard no, I am starting from no. Not a hard no, 'cause that's different, my, I'm coming from a no place, right?
Okay.
Having said that, I also understand how this, the, the cost of this has escalated over the years. I, I, I understand that, and I think everything we do is a balance. I think everything we do, I, we need to understand everything, and if you're telling me we're gonna go to a user fee service, I don't, you need to tell me what that means.
Okay.
I need to, I need to see numbers, I need to, I need to be able to understand what that mean, and right now, so that's why I'm, I'm a no right now, till I know more.
Okay, I appreciate that. The, the reason why we're asking the question is trying to find where there's capacity and what your, what your sense is on that spectrum, and so you've been very clear on that. I have a hand in the back.
Sorry, I just wanted to see if, I was, I'm trying to listen for some things we can follow up on. Is there a desire from council to see a cost comparison between the user fee and a tax subsidy to accomplish this?
Can I pause?
Am I, I'll say it.
Can I pause on that? Let me get through this round, and let me, let me take that up with this question, if you'll remind me of that question.
Yes, okay.
Mayor?
So I, I'm coming from no, I don't think it's a good idea, that I would much more support messaging that essentially it comes down to the pocketbook. This is, if it's a fee, it's essentially two cents just from the residents. So that would be equivalent of just two cents on the tax rate, but if we do the fee, it's actually four cents, it's the equivalent of a four-cent tax increase to the residents, just doing the math, 'cause half of it's from the residents. So it's about the messaging, and if we wanna not, the fairest thing, I think, would be to say, two cents of our property tax rate at this time is dedicated going forward to it, we're adding that to our current property tax, which is the, the political issue, but if we're saying that's what you're getting, you're getting this, you're getting waste collection for two cents, and then if it increases by another six hundred thousand next year, it's a policy, it automatically gets added. So if we make it a policy, we're paying property ta, we're paying waste fees out of our property tax, that's what it's dedicated to. People know exactly what they're getting and why it's there. The businesses benefit from being part of a healthy community that's happy with disposable income. So they're already subsidizing all the Parks and Rec, they're subsidizing lots of things that they don't get any benefit from, because it makes it a better town. So that's where I'm coming from. I think there's the hybrid method that is not a regressive tax, it's actually a positive for those on the lower spectrum, 'cause they're being subsidized. The million-dollar houses are paying a lot more than they would have to with a fee, so they can continue to do that. And the people who are having trouble staying in town get to stay in town, and we call it, doesn't matter what it's called, it's the money out of their pocketbooks.
Okay. And I've heard you say that before, and that, that's what I refer to as mayor's philosophy behind that. Council member Brown?
I'm coming from a no right now, but I'd be willing to get some information about the cost comparisons, because I'm, I'm reluctantly coming in with a no. I'm, I'm concerned that, what I'm hearing from the administration is that the, the administration believes that we can do more with the capacity if we had a fee, right? Which concerns me, so I really think that if we don't do this, you know, then that's gonna affect our budget of whether or not we're gonna keep it the same tax rate, but do we need to go up in the tax rate to provide that capacity? And so that's what I, and so I really have come into discussion, I need, I need to think through what my colleagues are saying, I'm willing to consider it, I'm coming from a no right now until I see more information.
I appreciate that. Council member Brown?
For me, the concept makes sense as a yes, but since it is only driven by the residents, I want to know where exactly the money is getting allocated for their benefit to. So is it facing like their programs? You know, are there direct impact, if, okay, they pay the solid fee, in turn, this two cents.
This is what you get for it.
Oh, yeah, we are basically increasing your programming, or, you know, like adding like more parkland, my, my main concern in all these things towards is shortage of parkland payment in lieu, because we are running out of that space. So how can we switch that to, you know, increase those things?
So are you, are you? So are you, um, are you for potentially a tax rate, uh, or, or for a fee?
I'm, I'm for.
If we'd identify what we would redirect the tax rate to specifically for parks or something like that?
Parks and res, and, and especially for, that's a direct impact to the, uh, the people, which are the residential like residential citizens. I would not say waters to, you know, because everyone's.
Stakeholders.
Stakeholders. Got clarity. Councilmember.
Um, yes, I do have a question. Um, so if we went to the user fee, would people, residents have a option to opt out?
I'm not sure.
I don't think that's a, a model that can be managed.
Yeah.
I've not heard that before.
Yeah, because I know when, when we lived in Pugway, we were outside the town limit. So we had each house had to call and, and make arrangements for our.
Private.
Yeah, and, you know, so some people opted out and just took their trash themselves every so often to, you know, trash collection place. So what I was thinking, if that was possible, we changed it to a user fee and if the individuals, the ones that don't like that, they have a choice to opt out and, you know, take their own trash to the convenience center. But either way, I'm.
Either way, are you, are you with a yes?
Yeah.
If it's directed to something specifically?
Yeah, I'm with.
Thank you.
Really good idea.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scraggs Johnson.
So at this time, I'm a no because I'm not willing to just say, here, have two cents on the dollar and go, you know, fill in the needs. Because it, it feels like if we're going to be assigning a user fee, the users that are paying that fee should know what their return on on that fee is. So I like Councilmember Garamella's suggestion about parks payment lieu because as we start filling out completely, that fund does support the residents, which are the stakeholders that would be paying for that fee. So that relationship of parks and, and waste for residents is really a strong relationship and I, I like that. So I would like us to work on a policy about that.
Okay.
And, and then I would start, you know, feeling more comfortable, but unless we have a policy that really ties that money.
Then you, your pers, your.
I'm a no.
You're on the spectrum over here, but until that point.
So because I spoke before Satish, I do like Satish's idea too, but I'm still not.
I, I didn't think it was gonna change you.
I'm shifting.
I need to actually go back to Councilmember Rabadi, because I feel like she helped us get to the question we were trying to ask and bring clarity. So I'm gonna give you, I haven't actually marked you anywhere on the board yet.
I, so, see, now I'm thinking like with an opt-out option, I, I still would like, see, I still.
That is not a model that can be delivered. It cannot be delivered in a public.
It would be so unaffordable, it would be, yeah.
Okay, then I would know.
So from, from her description, it sounded like she was in an ETJ or, okay, everybody do this.
Can I just put one more wrinkle? Um, associating whatever capacity building we do, whether or not it is a fee or whether or not it's an actual increase in the property tax rate to actually deliver more services. I love the idea of saying, and these will be allocated into a PPIL reserve fund.
That's a good thought.
I think that makes the messaging easier because people, if you're gonna make them pay more, what are they getting? And to say that it's for parks makes it a lot more palatable.
You, you put something tangible, well, the intent is something tangible in the future for that trade-off, so I appreciated that.
The one penny to the word reserve every year, people were okay with it because it was for something that they really care.
And they see, see us spending it too, yeah.
Well, that's why Mooresville 101 always works. People see that tang, they wanna realize these tangible things and there's will, there's willingness there. It's just to what level i- is different, but depending on who you are.
We are at an hour end.
Yeah. So I appreciate you, that you doing that with being on the solid waste fee. We're responsible for bringing strategies and putting these hard questions in front of you to see where that sense is. If it isn't something that's a go, then we need to know that, otherwise we spend energy towards something, yes.
I'm sorry, just, I know you, remind me when the contract is coming up again.
Contract, when's it?
The waste.
Solid waste?
It's in twenty twenty five. They expired.
And I've got an offer that, I don't think that's relevant to establishing a fee. I just have to say that.
No, that's fine, but, but we talked about that would probably be a good time to maybe have this shift, if there was any kind of shift, and understanding what that price tag would increase to or not, I'm assuming it would increase.
So do you need a straight yes or no on question three, or are we?
No, I feel like I've heard some things that we maybe need to work on.
Comparison discussion.
And that goes back to, um, um, Erin actually calling out and identifying, there might be something we need to work on as a takeaway. So I'm just gonna identify that as a response to this question for the group.
I, I think Giselle and Liz bring a very good point because we are estimating this two to two point five based on the current estimates. We are not estimating on the future state once the renewal of the contract is. So that could also increase directly like, you know, three or three point five, you know, with the new contract. And which means that the user fee will also automatically.
But that would be the tiered approach that was supported there.
If we all said yes today, we couldn't do anything until fiscal year twenty five.
That's not accurate.
No.
Okay.
We, there is a need time to prepare to invoice bill and collect. But we know what our costs are under this contract.
Okay.
But we also said yesterday that we were open to conversations around level of service and what we provide today. I thought in the past about the fact that, I don't know why we're doing white goods for free, white good collection for free.
Can I put that here as an evaluation? Is that good?
Not in the weeks, that's relevant to this, about service level.
That's a good point.
And that gets open the next time we review the contract. Total, okay, alright. Alright, I'm gonna move on so we can get to the other really important prompting questions. I appreciate you dealing with this question. It's very helpful for us to get clarity of where you're sitting. Okay. So fund balance, this actually came up in your debrief. Um, this is where that stems from. So our questions are, we have our policies written here, I'm not gonna go over these things. You already know that we have cash flow. Uh, the prompt questions are, what is council's position on the policy? Is there a particular element or elements of the policy that need, that you need to discuss? And I will tell you that Davenport reviews your policy every time we do a credit rating. And we are in line and have a healthy policy that helps our credit rating. So I'm gonna start with Mayor Prette.
So the question is, am I okay with our policy as it is today, which is everything in black? Yes, I thi, I think we, uh, we benefit greatly because our financial position is so positive that we, when we sell bonds, we get great rates. So, yeah. Unless you're telling us we're doing something wrong, and I'm, I'm never hearing that anytime we have this conversation every year.
Just checking in, are we okay with the existing policy? Because we're gonna have another round of credit rating when we do the next issuance, it's gonna be really important. If I need to shift something based on the collective entities wanting to, to give that direction, we have to start working on it now. I'm telling you, Davenport, the person that evaluates it, is actually okay and feels like we are in line with those that we benchmark to, uh, in our range and at a national level.
Um, I'm generally okay. I wanna read the policy because I thought, it was my understanding way back when was that we don't have a target, we have a range between twenty five and forty five.
It says specifically target. So, so it's in the budget documents online in the back, uh, in the general information. And it's also, um, I believe it's in the act for also.
So we get dinged by Davenport if we're not at the target? Because right now we're below it, so I wanna.
So what Davenport evaluates, or what credit rating agencies evaluate is really a couple of facets. They wanna know that you are, you are capable of building reserves or fund balance and that you actually are using them in a healthy way. But if you are deple, uh, if you are diminishing and depleting reserves on a pattern basis and not allowing it to rebuild, then yes, that, that does not look well. So they look at it from a couple of different ways. And so having a policy that says, okay, our target's really to stay here, because we know we have to deal with cash flow, project overages. It makes us nimble. What they want to also look at when they, what they like about Mooresville is we have this goal, this target here, but we also have the minimum. And that we don't fall below that. And that we are managing and monitoring what our activity is and what we use, and we are allowing it to replenish. Okay, and not deplete, 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 until we get way past in the level of twenty five percent.
So the policy's okay if staff feels like in order to really keep our credit ratings, we should actually have a, a soft target that's not in the formal policy that's higher, and what we, we need to do to keep it at that place. I would like to just be aware of that, but I don't wanna take any more time.
So you're, so let me make sure I'm clear.
Yep.
You're generally okay with the policy as it's written?
If it's working for Davenport, it's working for us and we're.
On that basis, you're good with it. Okay, that helps me a lot.
I'm the same way.
You are the same.
Yeah, no, I think I like the policy for, the only reason is if the cost overruns that we are seeing, we are getting into the fund balance for the residual. And to keep a healthy fund balance is super critical. So, you know, like for example, we just talked about the track treaty, it's eight hundred thousand. Where will the money come from if it is? So we have a tap in somewhere.
Okay.
So I'm okay where our fund balance is today at thirty six point.
Thirty six.
And, um, if.
So I'm not asking specifically about the, the percentage.
Well.
Okay, you're, you're using the percentage to help you.
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, I don't know the ins and outs, but I think maybe forty five percent is too high for a target and maybe that could be forty percent. Just so we're able to use, I mean, we still have a target that's high, but we're not holding ourselves back by making or investing in our town by always trying to be at forty five percent. Does that make sense?
I, I think I hear you, that you're okay with the policy, but we need to reevaluate on a regular basis. Is forty five percent at an appropriate level of the target?
Yeah.
Okay, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
So, so this is okay to me just means that we would recheck on a recurring basis. So, so the next time we do, um, credit rating, uh, uh, issuance, and I'm working with Davenport now, they are looking at those things right now again. Uh, so, so those would be the checkpoints. Okay.
So, I like the policy we have today, but I would, I would like to know if the council would like a little bit of history on our use of the fund balance, so that we understand how our policy is working, right?
Okay, so you're sort of in, in here, pre-check information.
Right, right.
But you're still generally okay?
I'm generally okay, but I'd like to know how often we were, you know, using that fund balance and, you know, how that, um, supported our use. So it, it's just a little bit of history.
That's, I appreciate that. It's clarity for me.
Good with the current policy. And also, just in general, I think that there should be some recognition of the fact that, you know, that the whole world shut down two years ago and that we're, you know, we're still getting back from that. And I think the reason that you have a fund balance is so that you can, can use it judiciously to weather this kind of situation.
Yes.
And we see it, let anybody go.
Right, so I mean, if we, like, I think, I mean, I think forty five percent is fine, I think forty is also fine. I, I just think that we, like, I don't think we should panic if we get near that twenty five because, because this is the, this is the type of situation that, like, if we have to, we funded four percent of last year's budget from the fund balance, I think that's okay, that's why we have it, you know, so. I, I just, you know, so if, I guess prefacing what I'm gonna say when this comes up again is, if we have to do that again, I'm fine with it too. So.
Thank you. So, so the twenty five percent getting to it once is not an issue. It is when you repeatedly stay there and you start falling below that. Because then you would potentially, if you have past three years, you actually have part of your policy is that you make a plan to get it back above and where it's supposed to be in a target.
Yeah, normally I'm suggesting we get to twenty five, but I'm saying that if we, if we need capacity, I, I'm okay with using fund, I, because I don't think we'll have to do it forever.
And it ended. Yes, you started.
I was making sure I got around everybody. Well, I was just gonna make a comment that in it ended up, the first year of COVID, we had an increase in sales rep, cell tax revenue, right? And then we had our butt burned too.
Right, and then it fell.
Okay, good with that one? Okay.
I, I have one question, just as, as a parking lot item, if I can get at a later time is, how much does each percent of fund balance equate to dollar? Because, um, I know we say thirty six point something, so how many millions?
And that, that, that of course changes because of what it's based on, but yes, we can.
At a later time.
That'll actually correlate, I think, with the request from Councilmember Scraggs Johnson about that history. Did I hear percent of fund balance equated to dollars?
Yeah.
So what's our time for the rest of the session we're ending?
Yeah, forty five minutes.
Okay, good. We are doing some speed, a little bit. Okay, so other reserves, I'll put this down here, I put art ahead of it, I didn't mean to do that. Um, other reserves, so major park reserves, your fire apparatus reserve, your transportation and roadway reserve, and your CIP reserve. So we dedicate money every annual year to try to commit to building funds. I wanna make sure you're still aligned with that strategy because it is really essential. And I wanna know the level of commitment is really where I'm coming from. So what is council's interest in continuing?
Can I give a one contextual?
Yes.
So with, with the current, uh, level of reserve allocations that we're making, think about that as about five percent of your. That's really, in practical matters, what we're doing is if it's two plus million dollars we're putting aside, you've got forty million. Again, is it one hundred percent equity? But think about it as, we're putting aside about five percent of our operating budget capacity to reserves.
And remind me what the reserves are again, there's fire apparatus.
Okay, I think I have to go down to fire apparatus, there's parks. And we have, um, transportation roadway is one, and then we have CIP. So two of them have where you said, an equivalent of one cent on the tax rate.
Right.
Which means every time, every year, it increases incrementally a little bit. CIP is different. We've tried to only do, or tried to do two hundred. I'd say CIP, we might need to bump that one up. That's not the ask here today. Uh, the other one, uh, fire apparatus, it's based on a sustainable, uh, replacement plan. So that one is because we are planning long range for something, for equipment, we are balancing a long range plan and trying to create sustainability with what we say we have to put aside each year. And, and yesterday I said, I see that one as a little bit different, that you are committing to that because it's essential to service delivery to core operations. So I treated that one as a part of your commitment of things. These, I'd say, are more at your discretion, uh, if you're having an economic year where things aren't working, where we can defer. But again, that speaks the purpose of building reserves at the same time, okay? But you're redirecting your resources to keeping core operations if you're struggling, uh, raising revenues or putting revenues at the level you need them in a difficult economic year.
Yeah, we deferred and re- and repurposed. We've done all of those things in a variety of years.
And the one, the one, the one cent goes to parks.
Parks and transportation.
Again, not dedicated. It is not a dedicated, designated part of your tax rate. It's an equivalent amount that you're setting. It's an equivalent amount that you're setting aside.
Thank you.
Can I make this an easy one? If you still are agreeing with the strategy in general, can you just raise your hand? Awesome, done? The next one for me is a little important because it has to do with how I might need to adjust the scope definition for these reserves. So the reserves by authority that you give us are written and adopted. And staff really needs the flexibility in order to make some projects more shovel-ready. We might need to use these reserves for that and that affects, you know, how we plan and build budgets. Yes, ma'am?
No.
Oh, you want to raise your hand?
Is that for all four or just the CIP reserve?
I'm sorry?
Is that for all four reserves or just the CIP reserve?
So all of them except for probably the fire apparatus. Okay.
But will we know what it's getting used for beforehand or, because I would, I would like.
And you'll prove that in your operating budget review?
I would identify.
Okay, so that would be important for me.
Did we get a consensus from the entire table?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I still, I don't understand what the question is. Are we saying we would leverage reserves from the other reserve funds to support CIP projects? Because CIP already has a reserve fund.
So let me clarify the question. So we have reserves and when we adopted them, we actually stated specific scope authority that you gave us with that scope, that resolution. And in that resolution, it doesn't encompass us using the funds for things that we can advance, projects that might be study-related. Because studies actually contribute to, to really understanding, are we willing to invest it and what would we invest in? And now we need to go out to schematics or design. So, so I need to sort of change the scope a little bit to open up the source to do that.
So this question is, relates to, um, do we want to revise those resolutions?
Uh, yes, would you make that flexible? To bring that back so that we can use this source for what they're intended for, which is capital projects.
Okay.
As a follow-up question.
Getting them ahead.
So let's, so there's like a parks and rec fund?
Yes, there is.
So would the, if a park is generally a CIP project, so would the funds for like schematics and designs, like the project, the stuff you're talking about, the new scope, would that come out of the park one or would it come out of the CIP one or you would make the call at the time?
We would make the call at the time. I, I wouldn't get caught up in those. The fact that you're telling me that you want to expand the scope of the use of these reserves is important because there's legal constraints around when you did adopt it, I can only use it for those things. I can only program it for those things. So if it was just specifically for debt and to pay go for the construction, I need to make an adjustment there to fold these in.
Did you have a question?
That was my, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that was clear. You're not talking about moving money to pay for something different than it was intended. You're just asking toward the.
Front end. It helps us get there faster.
For that, for that property and for that road project.
Yes.
But I, I still want to put some, you know, guardrails around, uh, like not, I don't want it to be used for like say stormwater, you know, study, if it is a parkland, I know, uh.
No, that's right. The authority that you're giving me is, is specific to the scope for that park reserve.
Okay.
Okay.
It's just more than construction.
And the law says you get us to construction. All right, awesome. I think I hear consensus. We can move.
Yay!
So we got checks across the board. Yes? This is just for me later. Y'all are moving, you're cooking with gas.
Oh, you outlets. What is the highest?
No, we're doing great, come on.
All I gotta tell you is I'm sweating up there, so. Okay, no, I'm having fun. I'm having fun. So ARPA funds, you heard us before that we have a timeframe we've got to do things in and we've got to plan now for them so that we can exercise this authority. It's a one-time source and that's important. So the questions here are what is the highest and best use of the remaining? This is your philosophical interest. What's the highest and best use of the ARPA funds?
Aren't we legally bound?
What are our options? What are our choices?
Yeah, aren't we legally bound by what we can do with them?
She says what is the highest and best use of remaining grounds?
Where do you want in the spectrum of what we do and what you've talked about back there? What resonates to you if you were to stand in front of the community and want to say, here's how we put this, these grant dollars to work? What would you want to say to the community? This is what I did with this grant dollars and why it was important. Clarity?
I'm gonna say for me, it's very simple. It's like any, any project from a CIP, you know, that we can say is complete and was totally dedicated towards the ARPA money for that.
So advancing capital projects is what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, and, and it has to, like, people have to know, it's just a message, you know, where did you use our ARPA money? You know, suddenly, you know, it can go into operations, it can go anywhere. But from, um, from a user point of basically the community point of view, if I had to stand and tell them, you got this, where did you use it, I'd have a story around it.
So, um, I just think of this as an expansion of our fund balance. So whatever our priorities are, wherever we can plug in the ARPA funds as early as possible to meet the expiration. It's like expiring fund balance. So that's just generally, I generally like the idea of being able to associate certain projects with it. But if we can say to the people, we used our ARPA funds, these are our better roads. If part of those ARPA funds are in our greenways, part of these funds are in our affordable housing plan. I don't think it all has to be lumped in one thing. I think it's just, we're doing good work. This extra funding from the federal government is being put to good use. So whatever our priorities are, I don't think we have to treat ARPA funds differently.
Okay, did we have a question back there? Do you guys get my ARPA expert? Okay, I was talking to Tom, he said, yes, sir. Okay, are we going in water?
Yeah, it was cheap, well, we didn't.
I was jumping because we haven't raised a hand, so sorry I shifted. Councilmember Ralph?
So I would like to see, the federal guidelines for ARPA says that cities can use it for essential workers, increasing premium pay for essential workers. I don't know whether, how they define essential workers, but I would like to see if there's any ARPA funds that could be used, um, you know, to like, for example, go into our fire department or our police department, not in terms of just first response, emergency service. I don't know if that's a possibility, but in terms of, of, you know, the departments, however we can allocate the funding, you know, if there's opportunities to add on to our sustainability initiatives, that could be a good use of the ARPA funding, uh, the smart city initiatives. Because we don't really need more broadband in Morrisville, although there's billions of dollars coming in North Carolina from the ARPA. I think one billion is what, um, we're getting North Carolina for broadband. But as a way of connecting broadband to come up our, you know, smart city initiatives that Rick Ralph presented. And, um, and then, you know, it's too early for us, but it would have been nice to have some of this parked for affordable housing. Because I think for affordable housing, we're not gonna be able to do enough until we have money set aside to invest in it. And all the other neighboring jurisdictions like Cary and Apex, they've got funds they're putting into it. But I think that's putting the cart before the horse because we still have to do a work session and we haven't really identified what our affordable housing party is. But I wanted to say that's where I would see the money going.
So you said fire, operation side and for public safety is what I heard you say first. Uh, and that's more operational when you say that?
Yeah, any operational, and there could be other operational needs. I just started with fire and police because I don't know how they define essential workers. But if there's a way we can increase premium pay for some of our department heads or department employees with ARPA funding, give them more money because, you know, in addition to merit pay, um, something to look into. I know other cities are doing that. Uh, and then the other departments, sustainability, smart cities, public, we're all over departments.
But, but that's a one-time pay though, right? So you gotta be careful.
One-time bonus.
You took the words right out of my mouth. So I just want to make sure there's, there's an understanding that some of what I might be hearing you say is going to impact a future budget that we have to now plan for. So I just want to make sure I'm not diminishing your idea. And yes, that's a possibility, but it's a one-time fix for one year. We would have to absorb it somehow in the next year. So I'm just making that part clear. Thank you for saying that. Your turn. He's, uh, that's, sorry.
He did the first one. He has the CIP.
He went out of his word.
That's why I have her, she keeps me on track.
Well, if it's possible, I would say affordable housing and then, um, maybe non-sexy projects.
Would we? Would you put the non-sexy projects ahead of affordable housing right now? Because she might know more about those sexy projects?
Possibly.
I'm sorry, I just took advantage of you there. So non-sexy, and this isn't a priority order, projects. Uh, and everybody, everybody remember, she actually put, uh, public works and you also put town space. That's why I really asked the question.
Okay, yeah.
Personal reason. And, and your other one was affordable housing, right?
Yeah.
Can you just, that's at the five minutes, but you're at 30 minutes until the session completes.
Okay, thank you. Did I get?
No.
Vicky?
Three more.
Got it.
Is, can we acquire land with ARPA funds?
My expert back there.
Yes.
Okay. So, so I would love to have a very clear accountability of the ARPA funds if possible, like a land acquisition or something that is a capital project.
Land and capital projects?
Right. However, if we can't get our stuff together in time, I'm also for using it for road improvements that are small. I think there was a capital improvement project item that was like phase two that kind of does curb and gutter improvements, turn lane improvements, things that everybody in the community will benefit from that could be accelerated instead of being in five years that we could do it sooner.
Are you talking about the level of service agreement, the level of service projects?
I think she may be talking about intersection improvement phase two.
Intersections, yeah, that's what I'm referring to. Intersections that we all, the pain points, because now there's more cars on the road, it's more visible and ARPA can help alleviate some.
I like the thought.
Yeah, I also would approve of spending it for capital projects. Like I'm just looking through the list of capital projects and if there are shovel-ready capital projects on this list to which it could be, to which it could be applied, that would be my top, that would be my top pick to get, to get projects out the door.
Okay.
Accelerate projects.
So I would, uh, I would put an emphasis on our priorities, you know, with CIP projects.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I would, I'm okay with first to wills along, you know, with the advancing our priorities with an emphasis on CIP, but for end, I would include, um, I would be okay with including a operational expense. Um, with the knowledge that this is one-time money and that we would be, well, like Michael is a perfect example. We, we're paying for.
Because we want to keep him.
Right, right, right. And, and, no, and, and so we know, we know full well that his mu, his salary is coming through, um, that we need to incorporate, you know, that into the budget. I would, I would add that here as well. And this reminds, so just so you know what I'm, I'm thinking of, wasn't it cops grants that we used to get?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and we would get them like at, they 80%, then it was 50%.
And then down.
And then we knew that eventually in year three, 100% was gonna come on us. That's what I'm thinking of here when I talk about staffing and operational needs, expenses to advance our projects.
Not specifically public safety. You're open, you're open to really us letting you know what that might look like?
That's exactly.
With awareness, we go in with awareness. I think the same thing this applies for you as well.
Exactly right.
The only question, I'm sorry, just a follow-up to the CIP, um, just an idea and I haven't had, I mean, just, you know, like, things that we've heard from the community, you know, we talked about community, those like basketball courts, you know, could be, if we're good planning to build additional basketball courts or disc golf, for example. Like some of the, the disc golf league we're talking about, you know, could be able to permanent, is there a way we can use ARPA funding to invest in some of those, you know? I just use those as examples. Of course, I want tennis courts, but I know, I know I don't have the balls for that, so.
Now change it to pickleball and we.
It's a T.J.'s question for all of us.
Okay, so, so my, 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 I was just getting an idea, like, because the 4.6 million dollars is a good amount of money. If, and we don't have an affordable housing policy yet, but if we allocate buying land somewhere, 4.6 as our responsibility and then give it over to have that humanity, that's what it does. So our obligation of like coming as a recurring, uh, annually can also be benefited because in that way, you know, we gave our share of what we had to do, uh, instead of the whole. That's just an idea, like, so that.
That's very happy to have.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Because it's one-time, um, and we are getting the best deal that we can because land is getting expensive. And we have moral obligation of doing something in affordable housing that we still don't know what we want to do.
Having other money.
So, uh, but in this way, at least part of it, like, you know, get a good chunk of land that affordable housing and I like to have it from where someone can pick it up from there and our obligation is done.
Yeah, and my comment for affordable housing would be in alignment with, with what Sati said.
Okay. So, so can, do you have anything you want to add on that?
No. It's clear what they're, what they're proposing.
Can I ask, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just go open one more round here. I think I'm hearing some common interest on something around land and affordable housing potentially. There's a couple of those that have sort of opinion on that. Do we?
I'm 100% in favor of that, but I think that we should look for land that we already own before we take the ARPA funds and sink it into land specifically for that purpose.
So I didn't, I'm not picking out specific projects.
Okay.
When I said, you know, align with, because I'm with TJ, align with our priorities with an emphasis on CIP. Ever, we just did a whole priority exercise here. I'm, I'm okay with that, however that falls.
And I heard that quite a bit here too. So CIP, CIP, land is included in the CIP to some extent. Is that really your stronger area of agreement overall, your overarching agreement?
The CIP in general?
Yes, CIP, those proj, I can even include these non-sexy projects as really a CIP potential.
But not every project on the CIP is eligible for ARPA.
I would agree. Time is gonna be important.
Right, so I, I like the idea that the CIP is a good starting point, but we haven't really seen the filter of what's eligible and not. That's why I asked the question about land acquisition because if that's eligible, then that would be my priority on the CIP is land acquisition.
I'm just trying to dig in. Where it greets that side.
And then just reminder that again, we have some habitat humanity follow-up that you're gonna hear as a part of your next affordable housing.
And also like.
And then we should all go volunteer in a habitat for humanity.
I volunteer there all the time. I love volunteering.
That's just helping we need to talk more, yes. Okay, good job.
I do the lunch church. We don't, for you and Cisco.
Cisco goes there all the time. We built enough walls in one day to fill three houses.
I, I built a camp wall in this, on the staircase. It's still, it's still standing.
They put up those walls that I built.
Okay, this one I'm hoping is gonna be a little bit easier. This isn't really an ask so much, not prompting questions. It's, um, gosh, I'm constantly standing in his way. We're not made out of glass. Um, it's just more information that this is what you told us in terms of the stormwater and that's being programmed in the budget the next year. We, we did a model. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were like calling me to order. You gave us direction and we programmed the first tier and the, and we knew what the bigger intent was and we have that going in the budget. That's all I'll say. Just awareness.
So there's no questions?
No.
All right, okay.
That's cool.
That's it. I'm loving y'all right now. And if Ben Nelson's here, he would be loving you even more. Other fees. So this is my comment I made earlier and this is just saying to you. Other fees. So this is my comment I made earlier and this is just saying to you, it, it is in your authority to, you have the authority to move fees or adjust fees or create fees for service. Remember parts development services. I'm saying to you, we need to take a good hard look at them. They can help in certain areas. Members for cost recovery of delivering a service to, um, review site plants and middles, for example, or to take a class at, uh, MASC. There's something we probably need to bring back through this budget process. That's all that I'm saying. And are, are we good with that? We do it on a annual basis. I'm saying we need to take a harder pass at it.
Well, you'll bring something back.
Just at a higher level of detailed information that I would make a part of the process rather than just saying, we're going to increase this fee by this much. Why are we gonna increase that fee? What will we get from that? Fair enough?
Like a recovery analysis?
Right. So keep that in check. Again, this year's about maximizing our resource capacity, what authority you have, and we need to do this at a higher level, uh, and, and ensure, just like base budget, are we getting everything we can out of our resources?
Have we, have we maxed out on the vehicle or taxes, I think?
You don't have to ask, you have a vehicle registration. Yes, we're maxed on the vehicle recovery.
And we're limited in for like development permits and stuff, there's, the state has a top, they can only recover, we can't go beyond.
That's correct. It has to be matched directly to the costs of providing the services.
So we're already matching.
But we do that in our list of security.
Let's just, um, folding that into the budget process and then giving that at a higher level. And that's it for that one.
Yeah.
Good. Now I got thumbs up on that. All right, that's a wrap. Unless you need to talk about something else. You gave us excellent, excellent input and thank you for spending time with me.
I, I have one question about MSD, right?
Yeah, no, don't get me into it, Josh.
Okay. So he's got a question about MSD.
So, so like, I've heard that, uh, well, we're into the MSD rally downtown does MSD for whatever their reasons are. So with the biopharma industries all around us, can we do some kind of an MSD there or? I'm just throwing like.
So MSD, again, has to, high level, probably wanna do a, a tutorial on it, uh, maybe at a future meeting.
Erin?
It, you have to obtain legislative authority for it at the state level. So there's a planning and timing component to do that. So that's the first thing. It also has to be tied directly to generally an additional level of services that you are providing to a specific area for a specific purpose. So I would tell you how to best illustrate that and where it's probably most often used is in a downtown type area where you either, so for example, if you have restaurants with perhaps bars that maybe their trash taken out much more often than you normally would, or if you have to street sweep or clean more often, you incur more cost for that particular area and you cover it with this additional increment of tax. So I don't know that biopharma is a trigger unless we're talking about any specific place.
Like a perimeter pocket, yeah, like, you know, like if we do.
Probably would have to, uh, because we don't provide any additional level of services there. Um, and again, your, people have to, in some respects, buy into that.
I just question.
But you, we could use it for, or, and we can use it for town center.
I think it's a good model that council will at one point want to talk once town center is, I'll say, much further along. But yeah, it's a very viable model for a downtown area. Now, and, and then again, we have one, um, related to a project of collecting fees in advance to pay for something that, which is our Gables project that you hear about.
Stew's, stew's.
Yeah.
Quick follow-up to that, um, is it possible to do retroactively to try to collect some of the?
It does not allow by legislature to be retroactive.
Okay, virtual high-five to everybody. Thank you for doing that with me. It was fun. Did I just say your back?
Yeah, that was Tourette's.
I thought it was good work, I mean.
I know, I liked you.
Are you saying that we're fifteen minutes ahead of schedule?
Brandon?
We are fifteen minutes ahead of schedule.
I am shocked.
I get a virtual high-five from you.
So. Do you, so right now is twelve thirty. We were scheduled to go to lunch at twelve forty-five to one thirty. Um, do you need slash want forty-five minutes for lunch? If so, we can just.
Now forty-five minutes is planned for lunch and we just start fifteen minutes earlier. We're about on schedule, is what we're saying.
Let's get, let's get ahead of schedule. We shortened lunch and then get back to work.
Me too.
You.
Well, I think you would capture back the discussion time that you, that we maybe shifted around, but.
Yeah, but we're fifteen minutes off of the schedule. Sorry.
First of all.
Sorry, the proposal is, are we interested in just a thirty-minute lunch or you wanna keep it forty-five?
Thirty.
I don't care, thirty's fine.
As long as it starts now, I don't care.
Yeah.
It's starting now, we're gonna take a thirty-minute lunch. Please come back at one P.M. And we're gonna keep on cruising. Doing great, everybody.
Did I get a, um? I think I draw.
Have a guitar.
I didn't catch a single fish that day. That's the sad part.
Okay, it's one P.M. Here at one P.M., we're coming back into session. Uh, next session will be led by now manager Paige discussing economic development. Please page.
Thank you. So, nothing up here. This is just a discussion. Um, and I drafted a memo, just a quick, and no, no shame. Did everybody read the memo? Okay, let me give you just a quick.
I read it hard.
Okay. Um, just a synopsis of, of really, I tried to outline in a very broad review the, the history in a few quick short sentences of the economic development services agreement that town has had with the Chamber of Commerce, which really has existed in some form or fashion, mostly informal at the start since nineteen ninety-eight. And then in two thousand and six is when those arrangements started to get more formal and, and there was an agreement established. And then the last time this agreement with the Chamber of Commerce was really updated was in two thousand and thirteen, really even before I came. It was right at the time that I came, but what I'm saying to you is it has not been reviewed, updated, and evaluated at all since any of us have been here.
Yes.
Um, at the same proximate time, the town developed an economic incentives policy that's really primarily driven to recruiting big companies in that provide tax base and jobs. Um, and, uh, I've also included a copy of the actual incentives agreement and some performance of metrics that were established at that time. Again, really have to mention, all of that was done with a, um, chamber president that really probably had some really defined economic development services skills that has not been here for many years. Um, so, uh, the, the agreement is in there because just over time, I think that perhaps we all think about and consider what does economic development need to us differently? And probably the way it's outlined in this agreement and what our expectations of this relationship are or perhaps should need to be, the world has changed a lot since we've all been here. Um, then it's been sort of, the, 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 the rep, the, the awareness that we may not all be talking that way or that it may need to be more than what it is outlined that been exacerbated by two things. One was COVID and a desire to really focus on small business. I will tell you, that's really not covered in the economic services agreement. And as you know, sort of, we, we sort of joined our forces to try to deal with that impact of COVID. And then the second has been the transition and turnover, uh, at the chamber level in their presidency and just in their overall staffing and ability to manage workload. When Sarah Gasko was here, she was very adept at economic development and really the town, including myself, was pretty hands-off. We really did nothing except get projects coming to us and quarterly reports about what was going on. So that, all of that has, dynamic has changed. Um, Linda, Linda did not come to the chamber with economic development experience. Uh, it was a struggle and transition. Uh, I have oftentimes just sort of filled in the gaps with really just focusing on making sure we responded to potential recruitment projects with our Wake County Economic Development partners. My skills and abilities are incredibly low-level. I, I can do enough to get us by in a pinch. That's, that's the reality. And, uh, and we have a strong partner in Wake County Economic Development that would not let an opportunity go by and help foster our relationship. So, so we're at a low threshold. And then now there's still the, the issue of capacity, uh, in the chamber. Uh, there's been discussion for several years, even before Sarah left, about how much time and effort it takes to do economic development. It's grown, it's grown, it's grown. And balancing it with the work of a chamber, a non-traditional chamber, that's usually membership versus economic development, although both parties would tell you many of the things are interlinked, you know, especially like retention, um, you know, knowing your business community, all of those tasks. So as things have unfolded, I think we, both sides of this discussion and partnership have realized we probably need to do some real evaluation of this arrangement. What does it mean to us? What does it mean to them? So I'm, I'm ahead of the chamber, but not by much and just facilitating a discussion with my board and they're gonna do the same thing with their board. And then I'll tell you, we really need to see what we get and come together and talk about how that works best for both parties. And, and I don't know what that means at this point. And I don't know until I hear from you if I could tell you what my recommendation would be. I will, I will tell you, um, it does take some expertise and it does take some time. I don't think there's any question about those things, again, just from my dabbling. So reading the, again, this is more contextual. You've got the documents, but I'm gonna jump you right to this and, um, just figured it would be easier to maybe just allow you to hear from each other versus, um, give you this to fill out and, and, um, do. So it, 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 and this is the same, again, Emily Ziegler and I collaborated on this. This would be the same kinds of questions or the exact same questions that they're gonna answer. And so really, and I've got somebody that's taking notes here. So, when you talk about economic development and, and how the town of Mooresville should be involved, it's, tell me what you think we should be focusing on. And, and we've kind of given you some of the components, not all that we necessarily do. And there's a variety of ways we can do this. You can tell me which ones you prioritize, um, what matters most. Again, it's, it's free form. We're just gonna, we're gonna, I'm not gonna write it down. We're just gonna capture the information that you give us. Again, business recruitment is really what I'm talking about, is bringing people in that may not exist here. You know, show them where they could do, uh, uh, you know, that's where you get the projects in closed session that we're telling you how much additional economic tax base there is.
I have a question.
Mayor President.
So, this is great, Martha, but do you want us, when we're looking at this and answering these questions, do you want us to think about this from a, you know, if, you know, if all things were the way, the way I wish they were or with the players that are in place today? Cause there's a difference.
Um, I think I'd like you to focus on, take the players out of it.
Okay.
What matters most to us for pursuit of economic development projects? Now, again, that is driven by the types of industries it is, how much they need, um, you know, site preferences, you know, we, we are often in competition within Wake County and then with other states. Um, and, and again, that's, that can be pretty labor-intensive. Uh, but I'd say take the players out of it now. What are our priorities in economic development? Because our, our town is gonna change. Ultimately, over time, recruitment of new businesses, unless they're going into existing sites, is not going to occur. And again, you see, we, and, and Linda has shown you that report several. There's twenty-five, thirty projects that may come through in a quarter. Only a very few of them are something that we're gonna actually pursue because of where land's available and what purposes it's for. It's just, it is time-intensive just to evaluate all those projects, let alone the ones you end up seeing. Ma'am?
So is this the list of things that it's possible for the chamber to do for us and we're prioritizing?
That this is components of economic development, types, activities.
Okay.
That we need to decide what matters most to us. Right now, we're not even matching it with who's the right person to provide them.
Right. But is the situation, so what do we want, economic development? Okay, so we're saying, what do we want economic development? So the totality of what we want economic development. Maybe we'll do it, maybe the chamber will do it, but either way, we want it done, figure out.
But there are other options. I mean, just, just to help advance this. We could go to Wake County and say, we want you to be our lead person. We could contract.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be with the chamber. You could do this part-time. You could do this full-time. There is a spectrum that's gonna really be based on what we wanna focus, as well as perhaps expertise. I mean, I would tell you, staff would be able to effectively help you more with knowledge of market conditions, trends, and forecasts, uh, events, programs, activities, and perhaps marketing and promotion of the town at this point. And then, of course, we're already dabbling into small business than retention visits or developer development liaisons. That's my opinion. That's just my opinion.
No, no, I, I agree, but that's it. No, okay, that's a staffing issue.
Well, we, we, you would, if you, if you, you recruit for what you need for a position. And yes, then it goes into what we ask for and what we pay for it probably.
So for me, it might be easier to think, in five years, what do we want it to look like?
Yeah.
So, look at these things. Who do you wanna be doing these activities?
So I'm not asking who.
No, okay.
I thought that's who should take the lead.
That's what's in the prompt.
So, so again, focus, what do you, first question, what do you want the program to focus on? It's, it's, it's layered. It's a layered.
Could you explain, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, good, you go.
I was just gonna ask, what innovation and entrepreneurial initiatives?
So that's a lot about what Mayor or Councilor Ral talks about. Accelerators, incubators, startups, entrepreneurial activities.
So. So I look at economic development as a skill set that we don't have today in the town, mostly because we've contracted it or.
Outsourced.
You know, outsourced it through the chamber. So most of these skills would not be aligned in our town at this time. So I think about economic development like bringing in new businesses, but also retention. But the third thing I always think about is that motivation in a innovation. I think Mooresville is primed to be a very, you know, um, a smart city, a leading-edge community, all those kind of things. I would like to see the economic development kind of push that envelope and, and, you know, look at growth of small companies into big companies and incubator of sorts.
That's what I think. I mean, I think that, um, I can, the way I think economic development is recruitment, retention, uh, development, community, working on projects, liaison with the community, um, uh, small business programming, the innovation, all of those things. Um, and I think that that's where I'm coming in at this is sort of looking at, I think that, you know, what I've noticed over the years, the, mostly the big economic development, in my opinion, well, after Sarah, Martha did a lot of the heavy lifting. That's just my opinion. So she was doing a lot of that anyway in terms of working with Wake County. So I just think that, I think that we're at a point where something has to change with, you know, what value are we getting? I, I mean, I value the chamber and I think they're a great asset to the community and we always wanna be partners with the chamber. But the challenge they're always gonna face is that whoever's the president of the chamber is gonna be spending their time. is gonna be spending their time half getting new members, which have really gone down, and secondly, the economic development. So, how can that be good for us if we want all of these things? We could either contract out, we could either have a staff position. So, that's, that's, that's where I'm coming at this. And, and I think, the final thing is, I think the chamber has to, has to sort of take a step back and, and maybe they're doing this to their board, is what is their strategy, what is their vision? What is gonna make them unique so they can recruit? Because as I said yesterday, as I go around Morrisville and talk to a lot of businesses, they want help in terms of advice, programming, but they're not members of the chamber. So, I mean, so anyway, that's all I have to say, wanna listen to the rest of what you.
Steve, do you even feel for why they're not members of the chamber? Like, what do they say about that?
Well, I think the feedback I get, and these are just individual businesses I know, is that, um, we have a lot of like, the big companies, like, even though they're in RTP, Cisco, Lenovo, Lenovo's a, you know, but we have other larger companies that we could get them vested in the chamber and they just don't feel like it's a good connect for them to, like, to expand their businesses and stuff. Most of the feedback I get from the chamber, you know, businesses that are there, it's mostly restaurants, retail, you know, financial planners, investors, I mean, you have a mix of different things. So, I think that's the challenge, is any business that joins, if, if, from their business perspective, if, if I'm a company like Cisco or IBM or whatever, I want, or a meat tier tech company, I wanna go to a place where I can get good leads, sales, I could connect with, you know, prospects. And so, they just feel like I pay the money and then, and coffee and connections is good and all these things. So, that's kind of what, it, it might be.
If I can compliment that.
And I'm just giving you my opinions, you all may disagree with me.
The value of a chamber membership is, is the networking, the connections, the prospecting, the, the, the programs, but they're, they're vehicles for networking. Whereas, um, hold on, I lost my train of thought.
Economic development.
And, and a small business in particular, their, their nose is to the ground silent. You know, they, they can't close their business when there's only one or two people to go attend an event. So, the value is just not there for a smaller business. And we've seen that play out over and over. Our, our response to even surveys, that we were trying to figure out how to help the small businesses, didn't even have time to fill that out. You know, when we've had events, and the one I can think of the most is East Meets West, where we say, bring, bring your food. Look, they can't shut down to do that, they can't send the people to do that. So, it, it, it's, it's, the, the value of the networking isn't as great for a small business. That, that's my sense, I think that complements what.
Yes. That's what I was trying to say. Yes.
And it is why we collaborated on that small business. And, and the chamber was great, they opened up all the resources they did have and were offering, whether they were members or not.
So, what do you need from us right now?
Um, I'm just thoughts, this is, you know, throw it out there, just so I, we can take it and try and assimilate it into something.
If I could just share some thoughts, like, when Sarah was around, she was a big fish representing kind of a small fish. But she was playing up in the CEO realm, she had the contacts and she was very savvy about that kind of stuff and we sort of lost that. And I think it would be beneficial for us to sort of be playing in that sandbox again, because now we have really big companies like Spark and Pathways, or big, bringing significant companies, Schneider, things like that. And if we could re-engage Lenovo and Microsoft and Apple, which is across the street, we, we could raise our brand and help support the smaller businesses who get to say that we are in the same place as these other businesses. Cause I don't think we're gonna get any more whales coming into Morrisville, that there's the opportunity to have everyone benefit from that shared shining light on Morrisville and the life sciences. So, at a recent development conference, they said that Wake County is a great place to do business because it's a great place to live. So, that's our main point, is that we're a great place to live and these companies are coming near us because of that. So, to, um, take advantage of that, I see some of the things here on the list which are great. I think business recruitment is important, but I think there's less land available for that anymore. So, I don't think that needs to be a priority, but generally, that's a big part of economic development.
Again, filling empty space or repurpose space is also something that gets included in those prospects sometimes. So, the amount of vacancy, and I don't have that information, but the amount of vacancies, it's somebody that has to sort of be on top all the time of what's available, what's not available, what fits, what doesn't fit, and is, is again, following those leads is, but again, I don't wanna just make it about land because a lot of it's often repurposed space.
Working towards that, and Sarah had a really good finger on the pulse of where, the fact that a lot of people were bypassing us because we didn't have the available capacity, didn't have certain things that they were looking for. And, uh, the four hundred acres on McCrimmon helps with that a lot, with Pathways and Spark. But business retention, I think that's really a key for us. And site visits to keep the retention, I think that's really important to not lose what we have. Innovation and entrepreneurial initiatives, that's one of our four key values, innovation. So, I think that would be really important of this list. Uh, marketing and promotion of the businesses, um, I think that's important to show our support for what already exists. And any kind of small business programming, um, I think is important. I think doing a great job with our part-timer. And I think, um, you said you don't wanna know who's doing that kind of stuff, but that seems like something that the chamber's doing fairly well now with their current programming. So, that's just my thoughts about what I'm seeing on this list.
So, I would, I would tell you, in an ideal world, the chamber should be doing business recruitment, retention, they should be developer liaison. The events, programs and activities, they need to be doing that too. You indicated that we.
East Meets West is their primary example. I think the point I'm trying to make there is they see some of those types of activities as economic development because it's meeting that need for connection with the community engagement network. And East Meets West is just that primary example. The, the, probably the C-suite is, is, is another one that's probably more related to capturing, I'll say, those big fish. Whereas, coffee and connections and know are, are more support for employees that work for companies that are members of the chamber.
Okay, innovation and entrepreneurial should, that should be a chamber initiative. Marketing conditions, trends and forecasts, well, I would hope that they were doing that too, but obviously, we do that as well, so I think that's fine. And then, um, am I answering this the way you want?
Again, there's, there's no right or wrong answer to any of this.
Marketing and promoting, I think, yes, we could have a big hand in that. I think we have a communications team that should be helping to that end. And then, regional representation, I think we could share that as well. I think, um, they, the chamber should be doing it, but I think we do that to some extent too. And then, small business programming, well, we're already gonna share on that as well.
All right, now, how do you keep this moving? Is there any other things that haven't been said by us? I think I saw Councilmember Fender first.
Well, I think business recruitment is still a focused area because there's still a lot of space in Perimeter Park and other facilities that are empty. So, I think that's still gonna be a, a focus or a priority moving forward. And then, whatever else comes to the, um, the buildings along McCrimmon Extension, so.
Thank you.
So, um, actually, all of these, what you mentioned, the chamber should be doing it. I don't see like, o, o, either or in any of these things. But the key I wanted to ask is, I've also heard many of the people who are in Morrisville, they are more signed up with either Kerry or Rally Chambers because they get more better values. So, what is that value that we are not brought in there for?
So, so I, um, and it, and it's a little dated, I have to admit, but I, I, I was curious enough myself to understand the membership of the chamber, that I, I did some analysis. And I think I was very surprised at what I saw, which is the types of businesses and who the businesses are that are members. Many are members of many, many, many chambers of commerce, the hospitals, the college. Almost, you know, have to, uh, based on what their role in the community. So, there are many of those. Uh, then, things like hoteliers, uh, again, they're looking for that network for their business. You know, there's self-motivation factors here. Uh, and many not located in Morrisville. I think overall, I would tell you, I was surprised by how few actual Morrisville businesses are members of the chamber. That said, I don't have a comparison benchmark to if that's similar in other chambers, even though they may have more members. I, I just, I don't have, I, I have that one data point. Most businesses in Morrisville, many more are not members of a chamber than are members of a chamber.
So, my, my follow-up question is like, uh, um, I talked to Dick Sears, uh, a couple of years ago, like, you know, and, uh, I think their economic development is part of the town initiative and he said, the lady who runs their economic development, it was the key factor of getting all of these businesses.
There are all kinds of models.
So, to do it, so, is it in our best interest to have that kind of model?
Yeah, there, there's different kinds of models and different kinds of relationships. Uh, and, and, and some have both, they all, the, the municipality and the chamber have to really have an effective working relationship, there's no question about that. It's, it's then, you know, who, and ultimately, I think that will be what we decide. Who, who takes lead and responsibility on what? There's, there's a lot of work in between that both, both sides benefit from. It's, it's really more about who takes the lead and, and, and working towards delivering that in the most successful way as possible. I, I, I don't, you know, and I've offered my help on the chamber side, you know, they, they have to deal with that membership thing and the size of the staff that they have to support. They, they have those issues to, to deal with. But chambers themselves have broadly varying levels of involvement directly with economic development. One thing I sort of didn't put here on purpose because the time isn't right, but as, in my opinion, as Town Center comes on board, there will be another part of an economic development that will become more important for us. We're just not there yet.
And so, I think that, like, there's nothing on this list that I don't want to be part of an economic development program. And furthermore, there's nothing on this list that I don't think in an ideal world, the chamber should be leading. Because if I, I appreciate what you've picked up and, and what staff has picked up, honestly, more than I can say. Because you all already have very demanding jobs. And the fact that you, I just don't think it's a sustainable model that you also do the chamber's work. Like, that's just, I don't think, I think that on all of these things and also on C-suite relationships, technology initiatives, you know, I think that they, I think that they should bring projects to us that they, that they wanna do and then we can, we can ascertain what level of involvement we can or should have in those projects. But I think they, honestly, I think they should be driving the bus there.
So, I, 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 I wanna just sort of reiterate what Councilmember Robadi has said about, um, collaborating with the chamber, I'll say in a different way, that, that it's project-based or initiative-based than just a, I'll say, a flat fee, which is really how I describe our current model. We give them a chunk of money and they're supposed to, to do all this stuff. Again, I'm just saying, the, the, the expectation of all this stuff that we've had has changed from really what's in that economic development agreement. And again, the world is not the same. Because one of the critical factors for, that we will have to decide once we're more concrete is who's paying for what. And, you know, our contribution to the chamber right now is a significant component of their budget. And we just have to, to recognize, I say at this point, that, that those discussions will probably dramatically influence them more than us.
Well, we should be getting a really, um, high level of service if we're one of them.
I mean, seriously, that's forty-seven thousand dollars.
So, so again, I feel we were from Sarah. I did nothing with economic development when Sarah was here. But again, the last, and again, just, just timestamping, you know, Sarah left the chamber.
February of twenty twenty.
And then, who's it hit?
Right.
And they made a strategic decision to, to, to dramatically reduce, um, and, and, you know, even the, the position was vacant for a year before they brought someone in. And, and then again, you know, it wasn't a secret that Linda didn't have these economic development skills, talents. And that's probably why the challenge for us just got more pronounced, as, as that didn't develop really well over time.
I guess what I was talking about is, like, I would expect the chamber to have the strategy, like, to have the skills, the skill set to put forth the economic development strategy. And, or that even the economic development vision with our input and then the strategy. And then, execution, to me, like, gets worked out. But, but I think that's a really important component that, that kind of isn't on here, or isn't explicitly called out here, which is economic development strategy.
Even the town did not have a strategy. We had an agreement that outlined this stuff. So, development of an overall strategy, and that probably is a collaborative discussion. Moving on to number two. What are the goals and outcomes you want from a program strategy? I may have been thinking about you when I wrote that. I mean, what are we trying to accomplish? Forget the tasks now, what do you want out of an economic development program?
Increased tax base.
Okay.
Increased capacity.
Say it again.
Increased capacity.
Capacity for what?
Capacity for projects. If it increased business-based revenue that gives us capacity, you could do projects that we wanna do.
I, 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 yeah.
Tax base, yeah.
Tax base.
Same. So, that sounds pretty consistent.
For me, it's more about, uh, having a name of Morrisville and being at the forefront of grabbing projects.
So, that's back to sort of what I talked about.
The brand.
I still think about identity, brand.
Yep, marketing and brand.
And a vibrant and successful commercial business community too. That is connected and networking.
And I'd say we are connected. We have good, successful businesses, but I don't know that they're connected.
I would agree with that.
They just look at a place where they're an office.
What about jobs?
Jobs?
Yep.
What about loyalty to the town as well? So, we provide a, a great place to bring talent to these Morrisville employers and there's diverse companies. I want, I don't want just one big or lots of small, I want diverse industries. We have a huge education draw from a lot of different things. So, they would have comfort that if they come to Morrisville, they're gonna get the, um, the staff, the teams that they want because they have a, a great, um, environment.
I need connection to loyalty, I need a little bit more to understand which loyalty for us to them, then to us.
The chamber can be that bridge that kind of helps them work together and strengthen the town and strengthen their own businesses. That's something I'm not seeing.
So, that's, so the chamber may be the, uh, once they're here, pulling them together and keeping them engaged in the community. Thank you.
So, yeah, I want good corporate citizens that are engaged and committed to this community and are financially giving back and.
Involvement back.
Yes, and, I mean, how many com, well, let's talk about the Veterans Memorial. How many companies do we have in here? They should all be giving to the veteran, they all gave a thousand dollars, we'd be done.
To give, that's the thing.
Like, the All-American City flags that we have on all our light poles, whoever did that, that's brilliant. Because I see all these different businesses, you know, around, something, you know, where it's kind of connected, cohesive.
I'm so glad you said that, that just reminded, so, so, I think we're missing the mark on that because somebody recently asked me, oh, how, I wanted, I would love to get my name up there, how do I do that? So, we're not sharing that message without to.
I had my challenge there, versus they paid attention to when the offer. Separate conversation. And, and then.
Also, I wanna be adding, particularly, I guess this is particularly small business thing, but I wanna be adding back, I wanna. but I want to be adding back, I want to be giving value back to small businesses that don't have marketing talent, IT talent, that don't have that expertise in-house, or would like to attend a class on how to build a website. I want, I want to give value back to them. I think that increases stickiness, increases loyalty, and increases their motivation to give back to the towns.
Yeah. Increases stickiness.
Got it.
One outcome from an economic development, from an economic developers sector, one outcome that I, an opportunity I see from Morrisville is to leverage, um, a lot of the growth of the, the small business tech companies that we have in the area. So, um, there's a lot of companies that are in Morrisville that are, have started businesses. Like, one of our friends, Sanita Marty, he runs a company called IT People. It's a women-owned minority business, it's a hundred million dollar company. He's on the slide deck at IBM when they talk about stuff. He's built this business in Morrisville. There's so many of these entrepreneurs, many of them are Indian American. I'd say one out of every three CIOs is Indian American, or many of them work at Cisco. We have a huge opportunity to connect to those tech companies and bring them in to Morrisville and help engage and learn their ideas. So I think that that, that could really differentiate our town from a lot of the other go, local governments in Wake County. So I just put that there as an outcome. Because I see it as a, kind of like, they're doing their thing, but they're not as vested into Morrisville. And they could be talking to our Smart City Committee, they could be giving us ideas, right? They could be hiring people, they could be talking about how to collaborate during layoffs. A lot of people are losing layoffs and a lot of the H one B immigrants are going to have to leave the country if they don't get a job in sixty days. So we could be bringing these companies together to figure out how do we do that. So I just want to throw that there as an outcome.
Hey, Marty, just a question. Before when you said that you looked at the business, Morrisville businesses, and they're not members of a Chamber. You meant they're not members of the Morrisville Chamber?
Correct.
Is that the only one that they're eligible to join?
No, you can join any Chamber you want.
So they're not members of any Chamber?
I don't know, I don't know outside of what I looked at for our Chamber and who were the members.
Okay.
Again, the declining, and again, I have, you know, I'm an ex officio member of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, which means I go to their meetings, so I hear stuff. And I just have just observed again, this declining membership. And, and, and really wanted to understand what that meant. And again, there's a huge need for recruiting and retaining members as well. All right, Councilmember Caramella, and then we'll move on to the next question.
Yes, and more than the economic development is a byproduct of economic development strategy is like, you know, the more jobs come in, helps the small businesses, the restaurants and the hotels and other areas. So, like, you know, it's, it's an ecosystem that.
So pay it forward, economic development.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so now, we sort of have talked about what we think is in it. How, how would we measure success of our program?
How many?
Councilmember.
Based on how many economic development we win, you know, like Sarah is to bring, you know, I would do that. I would also measure it based on how many businesses, like Park West, we are losing businesses, you know, that are like, restaurants are not able to sustain as, as an indicator of, for this one. And, and really, like, do we have that clientele? Because it's a lot of competition everywhere. So I, I would, I would measure it in different ways, like, based on that.
And I, and I, I'm gonna, I'll say push back on you a little bit because, and you've heard me say this before in my performance evaluation. We are not in the driver's seat when companies are making decisions. We, we put our best case forward to attract to our town. But the factors that they use to make their final selection are not always in our control. It's just, it's just a comment of, of what we can control and what we cannot control. We don't know what's coming in the door, you know, so is it, again, and I, again, if you have additional feedback, you know, shoot me an email or a text. Is it, again, number of visits, the number of calls, you know, time to respond? Is it how many we get in the pipeline out of eligible projects? Just, just, the metrics are hard to measure that aren't just outputs versus outcomes.
Yeah, so, so you bring a very good point that we are not on that, in that bucket of like, you know, forefront of, and the companies that are coming in. How are the other chambers doing? Raleigh Chamber is pretty powerful, like, you know, like, um, what's her name, and, um, the.
Adrian Col.
No, 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 the Chamber, Raleigh Chamber.
Lawson?
Economic Development.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Adrian Cole.
Adrian Cole, yeah. So, 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 yeah, yeah. So they're, they are pretty, you know, in tune with, and influential to get to their own city, you know, and development. So how, how can we have a seat on the table with getting some good people so that they can get us?
And that may, that may be a good additional task for us to do is, is again, get some additional information for consideration as this would come back forward to how those other arrangements are working. Um, and, and perhaps what metrics or measures they're using for some of that stuff. Thank you, Councilmember Body.
That's true enough, but part of the reason that there aren't good execution metrics coming out of the Chamber or the Chamber relationship is because there's no execution strategy. So I think that, so like, each of these things is a strategic, is a strategic element. And each of these things will have projects under them that'll be an ex, that'll be an execution layer. And every single one of those will have different metrics. So like, if you talk about business recruitment, how many, how many companies did we talk to? How many companies did we invite? How many companies attended that we invited, okay? But those aren't going to be the same metrics that we're going to use for innovation entrepreneurial issues. That might be a project plan full of execution things. And the only metric is.
Excellent content.
Did we hit that timeline? Did we hit that timeline? Did we do what we say we're going to do? Check, 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 okay, then, those, you know what I mean? So like, some things lend themselves to statistical metrics, but without, without a, a vision and a strategy
That is good look like.
And execution layer, you have none.
That's excellent. And then I think that, um, once we are able to hone in on what the value is, that will drive the performance metrics. I think that the real important thing is, is we have to come to terms and agreement for how we're going to assess the success of whatever economic plan and strategy we develop.
And I would go so far as to say, because this hasn't been, like, we haven't done that in ages. We haven't done it definitely since I've been on the council. We shouldn't embark on any projects unless we know what the, what the success metrics are. What does success look like? We, we haven't been executing in a framework like that since I've been on the coun, like, you've been, it's basically been, well, we kicked it over to Martha because, you know, and then you executed and you do a bank.
I would tell you, we've all been fat and happy when we get that big project and all the accolades and that, we've, we've been happy with that.
Yeah, and we love that, but at the same time, I mean, it, I don't, it's not sustainable. And, and we can't, we can't enter into projects with, especially now projects we're going to pay for, without understanding what the success metrics are. And without a clear understanding of how they propose to deliver on those metrics. Because that, in my opinion, that's been missing too. Who's, whoever's going to do it, but like, whatever they're going to be, whatever they're going to be responsible for, I'd like to really understand what expertise on their staff they're digging into that they think can make that happen.
Yeah, this does tie to our strategic plan because we have that economic prosperity in the working of businesses. Mary?
Um, so for me, success and things that we can measure, like retention. I don't know how you measure how businesses feel like they're valued within the town. I think, um, we're not that great about appreciating our businesses in two ways. Like, having the banners up is really helpful. And if we could do things like that more, um, things that would actually make us money would be good.
Are you talking about like an NPS, like a satisfaction score kind of thing, where, what that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think she, I think Sarah Ellis is already sort of asking the businesses what we can do, what we should do, and then they'll inform how we go forward. There isn't really any high level networking opportunity being created in this space. Like, Raleigh has so many events and Cary has so many events. So if we could get to that level or piggyback on some of Cary's work, I think that would be helpful. Um, we talked about things that we can't really affect. I think monitoring those trends is really important, as you said earlier. And then if we can, I think naturally, we'll understand which metrics will be measurable and influenceable. Um, because you don't want to measure things that you can't really make a difference on. So that's just a couple of random thoughts.
Councilman Morrell, then we'll move on.
No, just in terms of metrics, I think Councilmember Robadi hit it well, just based on the categories, you know, jobs, investment, you know, developments that have come in. From a startup perspective, like when you go to Durham, you know, much larger city, American Underground there talks about number of startups created, number of millions of dollars invested, all that stuff. So we can track the metrics in terms of startup activity. So whoever does it through the Chamber or through the position we have in Morrisville, or if it's a consultant, that's what I would look at.
Can I say one thing? I know you want to move on. And it's really not metrics, it's just that somebody said something that triggered this. I think Satish is on the Park West Village. In, in, in this economic development world, somebody needs to be tracking the shifting business needs in the community.
Yeah.
And, you know, if Park West Village is struggling, somebody should be helping them. So that's an economic development issue, but I, I don't want to see empty storefronts. So this, this shifting, um, you know, needs in the community and, and also the redevelopment opportunities, um, you know, that are out there. Somebody needs to be tracking all that too.
And also, this might come under branding, but I actually don't see branding here either. But like, it would be great to have a, to have a dashboard, like some type of external communication where we wouldn't have to touch every single business that wants to come here, where they could look and see how much, like Steve was saying, how much money's been invested, how many startups, how many, you know, how many new jobs created? How, you know, all the things that businesses want to know, you know, is that already on the website?
My understanding is at, 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 at a fundamental level, typically, we're probably being scrutinized, we and anybody else, not just Morrisville, um, behind the scenes, that those companies that are considering places to locate to, they've got their whole slate of people that are doing all that exploratory without us probably even being aware of it. So we don't have information on where we may be being excluded behind the scenes. Because a lot of that work goes on behind the scenes.
One other metric, tracking vacancies in offices might be a good way to do it. And making sure we're reaching out to Trinity Partners and some of our large tax people and asking them directly, how can we help you address your vacancies and things like that? And one thing, um, if we're going to get to sort of loose branding, it'd be good to have out on our website, like, what we are, what we do, how we do it. And like the daytime population, the evening population, I hear other towns talking about that a lot.
And again, that's supposed to be housed on the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce website through the Innovation Foundation. It has been in the past. I guess it's not been updated in quite some time. It had not been the last time that, that I did it.
And expanding like Launch Morrisville, which is the first year that's happening. Um, so those kind of helping the entrepreneurs at the early stages is helpful. And I'd love to keep them in town as they grow. A lot of them like move over to Durham or something like that. If you can keep those homegrown businesses within our town, make sure they are aware of where they can go. If they're in town, it'd be nice and keep them from commuting as much, which is a great idea.
For, yeah, for every startup we create, we create six jobs. That's what, you want to come on?
And six of those jobs move to Durham if they don't get what they need in Morrisville, you know?
All right, so I'm going to move on to question four. And, and, um, again, either you've read it or you haven't, we've kind of described it. Talk instead about what's the value to you about a contractual relationship with the Chamber of Commerce? Um, and, and then really, it's, it's, what do you think is working well? What may not be working as well? Current, current state, that, that's sort of where we're at right now. Commerce Project?
So I believe that the intent of the contract with the Chamber is that they have this capability and the skill set to provide the economic development, which is outlined in your first question. The issue that I believe we are facing is that skill set is no longer a dedicated, um, skill that, that current staff has. So I see the value of the town's money going towards economic development would be to contract with someone who has that skill, whether it be in the Chamber or whether it be at Wake County kind of stuff. I think we need that, but we need to make sure that we get a dedicated, focused, um, individual that could help us out. That might be a part-time, you know, kind of contract because it's not every day, every day. Because we're not paying for a full-time person.
And, and I just do want to clarify, but the, the number one is not all currently in our agreement with the Chamber.
Right, right.
These are just components of this strategy we might consider. All your other points, well taken.
Right, I mean, I would like that, that function to be performed by somebody, but I'm not, um, saying that it has to be from the Chamber. How's that?
Thank you.
So I can hear everything we're talking about needs to be spelled out in an agreement. And it's not, the agreement is just too vague. And we, we have some real specific needs around this room, so.
And I'll just offer, I'll just offer, I, I've got some feedback, um, that I didn't clutter this up with, from Sarah, uh, that the, the performance metrics that we did attach to this don't work. That's just the easiest way to put it. So again, a refresh of that. In any case, I think we need to redefine whatever it is we agree on. It, it is, you know, a, a ten-year agreement that.
It's a ten-year agreement?
It's been in place. No, 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 it's been in place for ten years is what I'm saying.
Okay, okay, I would say we need.
It's just been an automatic.
We need a little more flexibility.
It's just that automatic rollover agreement.
When is the con, sorry, one last question. When is the contract up for renewal?
It automatically renews unless somebody gives notice in a certain amount of time.
So my, so I.
And then, let me just, because it's, it's really important, you know, we, 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 to me, you can't devalue the relationship with the Chamber by pulling the rug out from under them and fifty thousand dollars of revenue. And that's why I think this is a collaborative conversation.
Of course.
Okay.
No, that, I totally agree, that's what I was going to say. That would not be my take. However, my decision after this retreat is that I want to see options of doing economic development without the Chamber. I would like to see ideas you have on what a staff position would entail to do it, what a part-time position would be to do it. If, I mean, I'm not asking you to.
You're probably just into questions.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, but yeah, so we can evaluate, but something, and it, this is not to throw the Chamber under the bus. I value all leaders of the community and what they've done. But this is a business decision and I'm looking at it as, you know, what are we getting out of it to do all these things? And so if we don't change the way the agreement is structured, we don't take a hard look at how the forty seven thousand dollars are spent, then I just don't think things are going to change. And so I'm at a point where I want to see change, um, in the next couple of months. Um, or I'm going to basically recommend that we just.
So right now, they have not tasked Rose with economic development. I agreed when I was, you know, you know, I, I've been aware for a long time about the challenges that they were experiencing. And I agreed to re-step in to do that basic level of not allowing major projects to miss Morrisville. So they have not charged Rose with economic development in their interim perspective. I only say that because nothing's going to change in the next couple of months. That's not the way I agreed to help support them as they try to get, I'll say, their house in order.
Okay, but I don't want to go another year and then we're having to sit.
Well, that's why we're talking about this now. And again, I would tell you Rose is eager, but she's also a novice as me.
I have a stunning amount of respect for Rose. Um, having said that, I think that we, if anybody can put together a plan that will help them work toward this, this list, it's probably Rose, you know. But, so that I think is, like, I, I don't think we can't get there. But I do think that we, I, I'm reluctant to, to really talk about like, how do we take some of this in-house? I think the Chamber, I think the Chamber should be doing it. So I don't, like, I would hate to talk about like hiring staff to do it. Once we hire staff to do it, the, the expectation is that that's our thing. And I don't think that, like, I, I think we should help them, but I don't think that we should take any of this on as, as town stuff. I think this is all Chamber stuff.
But, but, but even though it's a separate area, take for example, the area of sustainability. When we dedicate a staff number, we put resources, look at how far we've come just in two, three. When we dedicate a staff member, we put resources, look at how far we've come just in two, three years.
Right, but we didn't have a sustainability organization that was supposed to be helping us get more sustainable. We weren't paying forty-seven thousand dollars a year for sustainability advice and help, you know? I think it's, I understand what you're saying, like, yeah, putting a staff person on it would definitely jumpstart this, but I just don't, I think that's, I fundamentally disagree that that's the way, the way to go about it.
And I'll just tie this back to when, again, when we talk about those staffing needs. This, how much workload is? How specialized is it? How much time is it going to take in evaluating those delivery mechanisms? That's why I sort of tried to keep you out of who's doing it first versus what are we trying to accomplish? And I think that goes to both of your points. Are we...
They're working well. Right now, in your current way it's doing business, I think you took up any connections in the know, which was carried over from the past. I think that works really well. I enjoy that as an elected official, the opportunity to be out with people that I wouldn't see otherwise, generally really small business owners. In the past, like when Sarah had things up at Lenovo and I guess stronger speakers, that was a higher level of networking, which is also very good. So within their scope of what they're trying to do now, that's what's working well for me. So just answer the question.
I have nothing else, Mary.
I'll, in my two cents, I'm with Ann that, I mean, if we're paying them this fee, they should be doing the job and not us not adding another position where the work should be done by them. I would think we would first want to try to get them and communicate with Rose to start taking on that role before we create another position in the town.
And very much like we do internally, don't designate it as Rose. They could determine that they need someone, a specialized talent, versus just, it's been the President of the Chamber, but they would have to look at their delivery models as well based on what the program strategy is. Okay, thank you for that. All right. So if you're looking at the various roles, you know, where do you see, oh, I'm sort of taking again, five and six, really all of these. It's where should we be in the lead? Where should the Chamber be in the lead? And where do we collaborate the best? Councilmember Karen Allen.
I would say we should take the lead on the economic development, especially getting the big fishes to town.
So the recruitment of the projects through which you're considering incentives? Is that an accurate statement of what you're talking about?
Absolutely. And then the Chamber's involvement is with the small businesses and others, which like, you know, create that kind of a cohesiveness. But I think we should be on the front row of that.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, I'd support that. The small innovative ecosystem that can be within the Chamber, that'd be good. But I think that it'd be really good for us to have the talent and the experience on staff to do the real big fishes, understand the trends in the area, work with the, essentially work with Raleigh Chamber and the Cary Chamber, for example, to sort of know what's going on, even though that the, our town staff with their volunteer organizations, I think that would be good modeling. And then to have someone helping with our economic development in the town center type area. Like if we had a clone of Brandon, that could be like the economic development person for the town. I think that would be a good thing to have to just oversee our big fish and our small fish and work with the Chamber. I think it'd be really important to have someone on our staff. So we have that continuous service level, which got totally obliterated during COVID. We weren't able to help our business communities as much as would be helpful during COVID. So if anything like that were to happen again, and the Chamber were to lose a president, the businesses would still know that there's support.
So continuity.
Continuity would be important. We can do that in-house.
So I have a different perspective than you two. There was a time when the Chamber did do that, that they were connected in with all the recruitment and the incentives and that, and it worked really well. I would like, I'd like to see that again. I'd like to see that. They're the ones that are intimately involved with all that that's going on. So I'd like, I'd like them to do that.
So continuity is your primary goal as well. You're less focused on where it's provided. But the continuity of...
No, it didn't, or maybe I misunderstood, but I think these two said they want to see that come back to the town. I do not want to...
Sustained interest and effort, that's what you'd like too. It's not about being in the town of Morrisville's structure.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, change. And also, I think that when you're talking about, like, our staff people interfacing with the Raleigh Chamber and the Cary Chamber, like, to me, that tells you there that it should be a Chamber function. If, like, if we have to bring somebody in-house, surely liaison with other chambers is like, that seems like table stakes for a Chamber, you know? Like getting staff, working with staff at other chambers, like that, that to me, like, it's not even, I didn't even put it on the list of other things they should do because it's like a, like, to me, that's...
I'm hearing that it would be redundant because this is already a core function of a Chamber.
Well, I don't know if it's a core function of our Chamber right now, but I'm saying that it's definitely a core function of a Chamber.
But you see it in their book of business more than ours.
I do not see it in our book of business, period.
Did I see anything over here?
No, not yet.
Go first.
I have so much access in my mind to what businesses need and want and landscape of businesses that are private. And on our side, we have a designated person that works with the Chamber, and that would be you in your role at this time, whether it's you in the future or if you delegate that, that's another discussion. But it's that partnership of the town and the business community that helps the economic development program work. And yes, I think it's a Chamber function.
So you're talking about an appropriate support mechanism by the town, be it a manager or a designated, some type of support.
Right. So that helps their knowledge of the town and without, you know, being too overburdened some, but it's a resource partnership.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the Chamber should take the lead in economic development while the town would still partner with them, but with the Chamber taking the lead.
Have you, and then I saw one follow-up, I saw that with the mayor, Raleigh and Morris.
No, I agree with all you guys are saying the Chamber should take the lead, but after Sarah left, I don't, we don't have an answer. How many economic development opportunities did we lose?
We don't have that answer.
We don't have that info. So like, and how many are we losing in the pipeline?
Well, I would like to say none because I was doing, I guess.
Most of those leads come through Wake County and they go right to Raleigh.
Yeah, they aren't going to allow us to fail. But sustained effort of any kind, no, I wasn't doing that. I was, when I had to drink from those, I drank from those. All right, so I'll go back to the mayor then, Councilmember Ralph.
No, yeah, all I want to say is I respectfully disagree with the fact that the Chamber should be the lead in economic development. I believe that the town should be involved in economic development either full-time or part-time. I believe we're running out of time. I would say it's like a football game where you have the scoreboard. It's very competitive. We're competing against Cary. We're competing against Apex. They're beating us every time with leveraging brand to do all these great things. And we're standing there holding the ball with the best staff in the world, with a council with so much experience. So we can either make a decision to continue to explore and navigate in Wake. I'm not trying to throw the leaders of the Chamber under the bus. They're valued members of the community, and I think that the small business stuff and everything is valuable. But I completely disagree that waiting and letting them take the lead, it's just, it's a different ballgame now. And obviously, a majority of you don't feel like that way, but I find this to be very frustrating. And I think it's very competitive. I think we're running out of time. And I think if we don't make a change, we're going to, we're going to get our butt kicked by, you know, other local governments around here that have in-house economic development that are out there doing them. That's just my personal opinion and obviously...
I appreciate all those points. I do not accept they've beaten us every time.
Not beating us every time, but Tom Snyder and C. Wyatt didn't even consider Morrisville. We'll come in here, we're giving them...
That's one project, and we don't know the reasons why.
They didn't think about us.
So let's find out why. But that's one project you're basing a statement on that I do not agree.
But here's what I'm saying. If we give our staff the direction and authority to lead on things, the best things happen. So why wouldn't we want to do that with economic development?
Okay, but let's just take a breath here.
I accept your point. Just don't make blanket statements.
I'm not making a blanket statement. I'm telling you, no, I'm not. When the Internet of Things organization announces they're making an accelerator, they didn't even make it a point to call our mayor or our council or staff to say, hey, you just won a national award in smart cities. I mean, he didn't even blink an eye. He went in there and did a deal.
I accept that. But a blanket statement about they're beating us every time is not accurate.
Well, they're in it to win it.
Look what's happening over there.
Well, we could do more. We could do more.
It hurts to lose any opportunity. Nobody wants to leave money or economic development on the table. But I feel like we're acting like there's a finite amount of opportunity in the world. Like if we don't, like if we don't hire somebody right now, like we're going to miss out on every, forever. I think it's worth taking the time, getting the model right. And then, you know, I mean, you're, I'm sure you're doing a great job. I mean, there's economic development all over the place. But I think that if we, if we don't get the model right now, if we jump because we're worried about what we're going to be losing in the short term, we're going to lose out on long-term on many, many economic development opportunities that Wake County may not bring to us. Like, that can't be our sole pipeline for economic opportunity.
Opportunities in this region are not stopped.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to say, you know, I would be happy to engage with this person to try to get to the core awareness and understanding so that we could try to address that issue. Happy to work with you on that one specifically. Again, my request is don't make blanket statements that aren't accurate. That's just, you know, you devalue all the work that we've done.
That wasn't in my intent.
Last comment, Mary.
I'll touch you on that.
Revisiting what I said earlier about having a staffer interfacing with other chambers. What I meant to say was attend those Chamber events, but interface and collaborate with the other economic development officers or downtown development officers that local municipalities have. Apex has those, I believe. Cary has them. Raleigh. So if you want to play in the sandbox, I understand completely that it would be nice to have a Sarah Gaskell over at the Chamber or someone with the experience and the leadership. I'm not sure how they would be able to support that given their current situation. Given a few years, there might be a way for them to attract someone of that caliber again. I think in the meantime, it would help our town's brand and our actual effectiveness in economic development and retention to have at least one person dedicated in-house to demonstrate our seriousness about supporting the business community. I don't see that, that, I see that as being a big positive, using the abundance mentality, that there's lots of opportunities out there, and in order to make sure that we're at the table to meet them, we need to know about them. Given the current situation at Chamber, I think there might be opportunities out there that we don't know about. And Martha and our staff do not have the bandwidth to be in the spaces to learn about them. We need to have someone attending these larger events, making those connections. And I think that that would be an appropriate thing for one of our staffers to do. And I think it would pay for itself in the short and long term through property taxes and other benefits, including sponsorships for the town and some of our activities. Thank you for the chance to share that.
Last call before I do a last question. All right. So the last question is, you know, anything else that we haven't specifically talked about that you also want considered as a part of this conversation?
I'd like DEI programming considered as a part of the conversation. I'd like them to, not necessarily, like, not for the town, but I think that if they did, if they took on, you know, DEI, offering DEI programming to businesses that are interested in that, I think that'd be a worthwhile use of their time.
My chamber did co-sponsor one of those events last night, the Frontier.
Yeah, I've been to several of their events. I mean, I think they're great, but I haven't, I didn't know there was any since Linda left, so that's great.
Well, I have one comment. I don't think it's going to take years for the Chamber to find a president that's of the same calendar caliber as Sarah.
I hope you're right.
Took them years just to find Linda, though.
We don't know what Rose is capable of yet, and if she's not capable, they could hire someone else within a year. So it's not, it may be one year, but it doesn't have to be years. So.
Thank you.
I agree.
All right. So an off-script question. Just again, trying to reference. Again, it's about forty-five, fifty, fifty thousand dollars that we provide to them. If the Chamber indicated, again, this isn't part of this collaborative, but if the Chamber indicated they could fulfill, let's say that's the choice we made, is it worth more money to you? Where do you feel about this money? Again, it's a significant component of their budget, much less more so for us to, again, they have one and a half staff persons. If you need dedicated staff everywhere, it just costs money. That's the context of the question.
Like, before they do anything, I'd have to see a plan before I would think that we should spend anything additional.
Okay.
I agree with that. I think we need to sit down and I value this partnership very much. I've always valued the town's partnership with the Chamber, and it's always been very successful and positive. And I'd like to have this conversation, you know, whether it's at staff level, you know, but conversations between the two organizations to find some happy meeting for this.
And Emily and I have not vetted how to proceed after gathering information. That will need to occur. And again, some kind of, I believe, I think Emily probably believes it needs to be collaboration at the executive branch level with staff support. But, and we would have to then figure out the mechanics of doing that so that it's a good, open discussion. But we just haven't gotten that far in our plan yet.
Some, just one more. There was a time when we would meet, the boards would meet, and it's been years and years. I can't remember that.
That would be good, though.
Okay.
For me, like, you know, if they want to up this or reach to the level that we are expecting and the cost is more that they have to spend or we have to give them, I'm open to that because at the end of the day, the quality of service, it's a Morrisville brand. Either we branded or they branded is one and the same. And from our point of view, if we need some, like a part-time liaison or something like collaboration, that is also equally important, you know, because it's a two-way handshake. It's not like a one-way handshake that we have to work with. And, but we got to up the game. That's my whole thing.
So just restating what you said, you see a value in the service. It's then, it just has to be quantified, the cost towards what the services are.
And if they want to up, like suppose they say, okay, with forty-seven, we can only do this. And if you need more services, if you need more money, then so be it, you know?
Now, would that approach be helpful?
Valid card, yeah. Give us, give us some...
Forty dollars would get you this, forty thousand and fifty thousand would get you this. Is that helpful or is that not helpful?
Before that, I want to see plan, though. I mean, this is their plan.
That would be part of the plan, I would hope.
Okay.
Yeah.
Levels of service.
With a plan. I'm not doing anything. I try to see a plan.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, yeah, before we start putting numbers on stuff, I definitely like, I mean, yeah. I mean, I want to see what's, like, I want to take a look at everything they get. Like, I mean, if they can say, if they're going to say like project-based, we can do five projects a year. Here's on this execution layer, here's the, here's all the projects, pick five. With eighty thousand, we can do ten. Like, that to me is different from, you know, forty thousand, you can get economic development. For sixty, you can get economic development and branding. Like, you know, I want to see actual plans.
Right, right. I like that.
When's the last time they did a strategic plan update?
I think they're doing it now.
They're doing it now?
I think Linda spearheaded that effort. They established their six pillars. The Chamber retreat is being scheduled for, I would say, February seventeenth. I participate in that, so I expect that they'll do some refresh of that, that I might have more information after that. I don't expect that they're going to... I don't expect that they're gonna, it's not a wholesale refresh for them. And, and I do know economic development is part of their plan, but there are a discussion about that. I'd, I'd have to bring back more information on it. And again, I, and I know Councilmember Rouse upset with me.
No, I'm not upset. I think, I mean, no, just for the record, for anyone in the, in the room or any staff member, including the administration, thought I was trying to throw everyone on the bus by saying that, um, to make a blanket statement, what I was trying to say was that, um, that I believe so much in our staff and our town that we should be beating, we, we can beat any municipality on any opportunity, any day of the week and on Sunday. And that's all I was saying. I was not saying that, you know, that we're not, you know, that, I didn't mean to make that blanket statement. I just feel like we can do much more than we're doing if we're given the opportunity and that's just my personal opinion.
So thank you for that support message.
Thank you. That's what I was meant to say. I'm sorry I was misunderstood.
Thank you. But the only other, again, this isn't a thirty or sixty day conversation. I mean, we need to work through this, again, hopefully aligned with our budget. And I think that there's commitment on both sides to doing that. But again, I don't have an answer for you in thirty days is really what I'm saying. All right. Thank you. We are fifteen minutes into your council debrief hour. I have a proposal for you.
Turn the bus.
If council is comfortable with debriefing quickly on a bus, usually we do it gut reaction so that you don't forget them and then the more sustained, think about it over time. We could do that and leave a little earlier or we're going to launch into a discussion now.
Boss.
We had said that, we had said that two-thirty, like we had shortened that debrief to a half hour already.
We got the time back and then you shortened your lunch. We're back on schedule. We're just now fifteen minutes behind.
Nice try though.
Boss, come on.
But again, um.
You really want to do this on the bus?
Fifteen, twenty minutes on the bus, fifteen or twenty minutes now, your preference?
Can we sign these?
Uh, thank you, thank you. You are supposed to affirm code of conduct and ethics.
Yes.
Again, if, if we need to discuss that, let's discuss it. Otherwise, I'll take your papers.
Just sign, okay?
Thank you for the reminder.
I haven't read it.
What's the?
I haven't refreshed my memory.
Just sign it.
You have to be late.
It hasn't changed.
I tried the age.
Just sign it though. What's the date?
Twenty-nine.
Nine. Twenty-nine?
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'd be in favor of just not debriefing now and getting staff any questions they might have that we might have to help with budget developments.
Oh.
I'm all in favor of the bus.
Well, we have to find a bus driver, so.
Bus, bus is ready?
Well, two buses. One way. He's, he was getting ready about two-thirty anyway, so.
Oh, that's all good.
I just don't know if he's ready.
All right, let's do eleven minutes right now and nothing on the bus. How does that work?
Sounds good.
That works. You may have, I'm going to ride back on the bus with you. Staff was working out who was going to take back the vehicle and who's riding on the bus, but again, all right. We didn't start over here last time, so we'll start with Councilmember Garamella. Shupi, any thoughts about the retreat?
I think it was pretty good. You guys gave opportunity of what CIP projects were and the scope and, you know, prioritization. The only takeaway is how to fund it is becoming harder and harder and the options are running dry, so.
So can I say, take from that, the CIP was the, the most important part of the retreat for you?
Yeah, I, I think so because there are other areas too, but CIP I really liked because we had a clear picture.
All right, and I've got some prompt questions after I get the first feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, great retreat. I really liked the way you all facilitated the sessions, was able to get us thinking much more high level. Felt the energy level was much higher among the council and the staff. And I think the pre-work we did on Thursday was very helpful to get the department presentations. So the, the time that we spent here was very good. I think Mi- Michael did a great job on the CIP along with Brandon. And yeah, so it was a very successful retreat, so thank you.
Mayor?
Um, I thought it was really good. It was a little bit of a lot Tuesday, Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But I really enjoyed the brainstorming in the beginning and how that all helped the group coalesce really well. And I thought that that was really helpful. I always enjoy prioritization of CIP, hearing from my colleagues what's important, why. So I thought it was a really good retreat and we really, I really appreciated the opportunity to have more group discussions and hearing a lot more, the encouragement to do the yes and early was really nice and important. And I think we had a lot of that today and yesterday. So thank you for helping facilitate a really good retreat.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll try to add something different, but I echo everything that's been said. I'm going to repeat though, the Thursday night presentations from department heads, I really appreciate that. I like that a lot. So, so I thank all of them for, all the department heads for showing up. The only other thing I want to add, besides everything that's been said, is I really appreciate how you all, staff, meaning staff, have worked together on this retreat. You've been referred to as the dream team and so the, the way.
Not in her.
Yeah, I was going to say, the way, the way you all work together has made this a very easy and enjoyable retreat. So I appreciate that, all that.
And I'll, I'll just make a comment now and I'll, and I'll give staff a fair warning. I'm going to ask you the same question after council weighs in. It really was a group effort versus all of the components of the retreat being invested in one person. Really, everybody played some part of pulling it together in an incredibly effective way. Thank you.
One last thing, and the focus on budget. Excellent.
Okay.
And I agree. I, I do particularly want to call out Jeannie for some really fantastic work here. I, everybody works so hard. Everybody's great. I just want to call it. And the, so I, I think that the, the discussion that we have here is so valuable. And if anything, to me, highlights the fact that it's impossible to have these conversations at nine o'clock at night after a full-on meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, just, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm saying the difference in the level of discussion here, even when we have a two-hour closed session, it's just not the same. And the only, the only thing that I would like to put forth as an opportunity is that, I know this doesn't apply to everyone on the council, for me, to shut down operations at two o'clock on a, to me, two o'clock is the middle of the business day. And it's, so it's hard for me to, you know, even if we move that back to four and then drove down to wherever and went straight to a restaurant and had dinner, like even something like that. If, any consideration that you could make toward, toward, you know, a lot of us now on the council have full-time jobs and any consideration that you could make towards that, I would really appreciate. But I, totally, a great experience. Again, you know, we always have a good, a good time at these things and thank you.
So I, I did like the opportunity to meet with the department heads on Thursday for dinner, just casually to kind of know a little bit more about them. Because every time I, I see them, they're, they're presenting and that's a different dynamic. So to maybe just understand a little bit more about the why behind their messaging is helpful. I found it a little rigorous that we did something on Tuesday and then on Thursday and then on Friday and then Saturday, Sunday. That I, I took vacation days. Actually took a vacation day on Monday to recover because I know me, maybe not everybody, maybe Steve is more resilient. He probably didn't take a vacation day. But while we were here, we were very focused and the first opportunity for the council to see each other in person and interact in a less formal setting, to have that brainstorming, to have our self-identified process for stickies and everything. I appreciate the council having some faith in the sticky process that I proposed because I think it really did bring out a balance of voices for us to kind of kick off the retreat. And then from there, we really excelled. We really built on each other's ideas and we, we listened to staff to help us kind of, you know, refocus and rebase when we needed it. And it was, it was a very good, positive experience. We didn't feel like somebody was stepping on our toes. We established that culture of openness and building on each other's ideas. So good retreat. I really want to know more about money and function and time. And that's just the P, project management person.
Money and function and time of town or the retreat itself?
Um, all these projects that we've been talking about all weekend. You know, it's just, how does it all fit together? I'm thinking Budgettopia, you don't have to do it. Yeah, I'm not asking for Budgettopia, but that, that's kind of, you know, that, you know, how does it all fit together? I'm still wondering how we take it from here, so.
Thank you. President?
I thought everything was great. The location was very nice. The content that you guys provided was right on point. You guys were very organized and did a lot of prep work of time. And I think you guys were good at keeping us on schedule. And I think the council, you know, did well in monitoring ourselves as well and not to get too far off track. So those were all good points. Only small delta I have is make this room is a little tiny.
So as you, as you, again, we'll come back because sometimes you think about things you didn't say. We are room, food, timing. We always have that challenge of where it falls. It's something we actually talked about when we picked the weekend, you know, the choice of a whole week free versus lumping it all in. That's always a challenge. We always try to manage content to not be overwhelming. A quite, a specific question I have is, again, you know, we have to pause on topics because you need more time and we recognize that going in. And, and as you've heard, Jeannie especially, everything does layer and build. And we're trying to make it at a pace that I, I'll say that you can manage. And again, keep the constraints of retreat, but any of those things that help. Typically, we're really off-cycle from an in and out because we didn't do that last time. So usually we've done this out after an election. So just really be thinking a little bit ahead. We did more vetting of more places this time to give you options. So if there's really options you want to look at, whether you like the economic development component, whether you like the dinners, you know, the, again, the, the timing of the presentations to the retreat, all of that stuff helps us balance. We learned something ourselves. Next time, Dots will have your initials on it. All right. Jeannie is always my retreat superstar. Jeannie, anything you want to add real quick?
Just a big thank you. I loved the productive conversation that you had amongst each other because I've observed you for years, different groups, but same, same situation in the Bahamas. You guys really raised the bar for how I see the next group. You really did it for yourselves in talking with each other. The yes and was really important and I loved every time you all did that, that you heard that and felt it was meaningful. I hope that the less is more presentation approach worked for you. I feel like the outcome from what I'm talking about actually did occur as a result of maybe us doing less presentations and you more talking and doing the brainstorming. And that we gave you control and we weren't needing you. We gave you control because this was your retreat.
And we didn't screw that up, so I think that's, you know.
And I know you joked about this best retreat ever, but you continue, you continue to gel together and it shows for our staff. So, so we aren't just saying that. We mean it. Brandon?
No, I appreciate it. I think it's, it's a couple of you have mentioned. I mean, this is just a different opportunity to really dig a little bit more in, get into a little bit of your individual-wise behind, you know, your decisions, your thoughts, your processing. I think that helps you as a group talk to each other, but it also, of course, helps us better understand, hearing some of those little things that we might not otherwise know that help us better prepare recommendations and, and projects and other things for you. So I appreciate your time and really the candor and the willingness to work together.
Erin?
Um, I, I would say honestly, less topic-based for me and your group feedback for you all. This is my seventh retreat with you and I shared this morning at breakfast. It's probably the most robust discussion I think I've, I've seen this council have. And I've seen, you know, some of you together in, in different groups, but recognizing in use of inclusive language, recognizing different learning styles, recognizing that there's difference of opinions and you can agree to disagree and you can come at things from different angles and you can have different perceptions and passions and still reach resolution for the betterment of the Morseville community. I don't know if you realize that's what you all are, are doing and have done. But you've really collaborated well this weekend, not only amongst yourselves. You've also allowed staff to collaborate well with you. You mentioned that you've all worked well. You've allowed us to, to be able to participate and, and help in that process. So I think it's been a really, really good retreat for a number of reasons. And I think you all really should be really proud of what you've accomplished this weekend.
And I'll say Erin got a pass and she didn't take the, she wanted to be here.
Not to call out Frank.
Yeah. Frank was smarter.
This is also the first retreat in seven years that I had no role.
Oh, you had no presentation per se, yeah.
Erin's pulled heavy workload behind the scenes regularly.
I feel like just being a soothing presence in the room has some value too, you know?
Sticker police.
All right, Michael got inducted into the retreat.
We're the end of the year. They haven't been in the end yet.
You're still smiling.
I'll just say I appreciate the opportunity to, to join all of you. It's been interesting and helpful for me to learn more about all of you and what you're interested in and how you have discussions. I've been in a lot of public meetings. Obviously, I'm still early on in my career, but I've been in a lot of public meetings and I am impressed how you all work together and how thoughtful you are and how much you appreciate other people's perspectives. So I agree with a lot of it.
Thank you, Michael. And you really did a fantastic job.
Yes, you did.
You did. Giselle?
Well, this is also my first retreat, so I echo.
Yay!
M V P. Along with Erin and Jeannie.
I, I enjoyed the conversation. I, I agree. I think someone said, I think it may have been Councilmember Robby that said the conversations here were much different than at a council meeting at nine P M. And I agree with that. I think the level of, or the depth of the conversation and your ability to express your opinion in a particular subject was a lot more, I feel like, a lot more freely, more expanded than what we did at nine P M, ten P M. And it allows the ability to just on those important topics and, and lay the groundwork that is needed for such an important process. I appreciated the opportunity to be able to understand your individual interests and how does that complement the council as a whole. So I, I really enjoyed the, the retreat.
Thank you. And Erica, bring it on for us.
That's a lot of pressure. Um, you know, I've been clerk for almost four years and one thing that I've learned is that when I'm drafting minutes, I can typically tell, what's the word, the, the positiveness or the, the positive direction the conversation is going in based upon how easy it is for me to take the minutes. When the conversation is kind of all over the place or it's getting off or, you know, there's aggression intention, I can tell it when I'm taking the minutes. But these minutes were, they were briefs. I'm going to get Lamartha like a day or two. I mean, they were really easy. So, I mean, it was, it was, it was good. Conversation was really good, so it was good.
Yay. Well, thank you. Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Thank you all. Great meeting. Thank you to staff and all the staff still in Morseville to help prepare all this. Don't want to forget about them as well. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
Thank you.
Fine.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, fine.
Erin, what are our instructions?
Uh, we are just heading downstairs. Larry should, should go ahead and let us around.